Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, December 4th. It's 7:03 in the evening and we're going to get started with the number of cases that we have tonight. The first case is a continuance at the request of the applicant. This is case number 1919, 2180 Boston Providence Highway. Could I have a motion for a continuance at the request of the applicant?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne, second by Jane.
Do they request a date?
Yes.
January 15th.
January 15th. Thanks Bob. Continue to January 15th. No further notice will be given. All those in favor of continuing the case for 2180 Boston Providence Highway say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Next one is for case number 16-19 for Cranberry Lane. The applicant has requested a continuance here. This also continued until January 15th. Is that correct Amy?
Yes.
And the applicant is working with the building inspector on this. This was an in-law suite. Could I have a motion to continue that case?
So moved.
Moved by Suzanne.
Second.
Second by Jane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So the next case we have is case number 2019, Cedar Creek Homes, 960 West Street. This is for an in-law suite. So want to come forward. Last time we were looking for a few things. One of them was a plot plan to show how the property was situated, the home is situated on the property and as of 10 o'clock this morning, we didn't have a plot plan. Do you have a plot plan now?
I'm pretty sure I gave it to you guys last time I was here because I have page two of two of the plot plan. So I know I handed it to somebody last time we were here. This is drawn by legacy engineering. We had asked about that at the last meeting and I physically took page one of two and left it here with the board.
In the minutes it said we were missing it.
Yeah, see, I don't have it in my list of what we discussed at the last hearing.
It's like on the application itself.
Would you have a plot plan? Does everybody have this?
It's at the end of the cloud.
The end of the application?
Yeah. I think it's the last page.
Yeah, it's the last page. I think the other thing we needed was to look at the building, didn't we?
Yeah. So did you make any modifications?
Yes.
To it. So do you want to walk us through? So we do have the plot plan, so.
Yes.
That's good.
Yeah. So the modifications where we added the correct terminology to the master bedrooms. We call that a bedroom. So all the terminology on page A4, drawing A4, has been highlighted and circled in a cloud so you can identify quickly. We also looked at adding a cutout to the main house at the back of the addition.
So how does, from the in-law suite, how does one enter the main house at this point? Because I'm looking at it.
Well, obviously through this proposed 36-inch opening through the back of that in-law suite to the main house.
So I see work area.
Well, you'll see where it's a cloud on drawing A4. You'll see it's highlighted where I cut a 36-inch opening to connect the existing to the new house in the garage.
Oh, I see. So they're going to come in through the garage?
Yes.
So how is this not a separate dwelling unit?
Well, it's connected to the main house through this door, through this opening here.
Through the garage?
Correct. That'll lead to the main house.
I think this garage is out of whack. Is this the house where the garage is out of whack?
No.
Is this the one that has the extra garage?
There's already a two-car.
Yeah, there's already a two-car garage in the existing house.
Right here. Right here. And now this, so this.
So it's going to be three-car garage. So they have to go through inside one garage to get to the other garage?
Well, that garage, there's a staircase that leads to the main house, to the mudroom, if you will, from that house.
Am I like totally confused on what?
Well, what it is, my concern is this is a separate, it's not part of the house. It's separated by a garage. There's no way to go from the main house into the in-law suite.
The garage, yeah.
Well, you'll see there's two doors. There's a door that goes to the garage and there's a small stairway that leads to the main house through that, through the two-car garage. And then there's another door that leads to the in-law from this existing garage. So they concurrently run through from the main house through the garage through here to get to the in-law.
I'm missing, I think there might be another way on the deck. Is that what it shows?
Yeah, there's a, the deck redesign as well. But obviously that's exterior.
So the, I see the redesigned lower deck.
Yep.
And I see some stairs that say down.
Correct.
That's all outside.
That's correct.
This is the only way into the house.
That's not good.
Have these plans been submitted to the fire department?
Yes. They came back with just adding a smoke detector to the bedroom, which has been done.
It's only one entrance.
That is on page A6.
And we did have a follow-up letter from the fire department. It's a minor point but he did say that it still refers to the incorrect detector. But then he further states if the request is approved, the building plans would need to be submitted to fire department for review of all life safety devices and it can be corrected at that point. So that is.
So the only way in there is through that, the two-car garage into the one-car garage?
In is also a front door on the exterior as well.
Right.
There's a front door and a rear door slider that leads to the deck.
But not into this unit?
Not into the, well, there's two doors. There's one coming out of the main garage through the proposed cutout. And then you just walk through the garage space and into the main addition through this opening that you see right near the utility room.
Yeah.
If the garage was on the other end.
Right. It'd be perfect.
And I said that last night.
Yeah.
So the concern is that it's not an in-law suite. It's a separate unit that's being built onto the house. And it doesn't connect into the flow of the house except through the garage. And how does this differ from a separate apartment in a.
Well, yeah, a separate apartment, there wouldn't be the egress that would go into the main house. That was, that would be the issue, right? There's egress now getting into the main house, so.
But the egress is actually through the garage into the main house.
Which is, I mean, it's still, it's still egress. I mean, even if I built a wall in that garage, that would just go through that and I sheet rocked and put a carpet near, that would, that would suffice. Otherwise, what I have to do is I've got to move the garage to the other side near the main house over there.
Yeah.
And from an aesthetic standpoint, I'm taking away from how I'm trying to line the three-car garage up. So they're symmetrical. Otherwise, the garage is down the other end.
Totally understand that.
Yep.
But from a zoning board perspective, what we're looking at is not creating a two-family house in a single-family residential zone. And I understand it's an in-law suite and you have full intent of that being an in-law suite.
Well, would a deed restriction suffice as well?
You're going to have, there already is, there will be a deed restriction. But the question is, is it designed to allow for the connection, for the in-law suite to be part of the house? And what I see on this is it's a separate, it's separated by a garage. It's not, it's not an in-law suite. It's a separate unit separated by a garage. And we brought this up last time saying that you had to walk through a garage. That's not the, that's not the intent. And it creates a separate dwelling unit that is not an in-law suite. Do you understand?
Yeah, no, I do, I do. And again, I sat with the architect and this is the way he drew it and said this would meet the expectations of the board from a registered architect. So I leverage his experience. So, I mean, I just don't want to, you know, I'd rather see what the board recommends so I can do it as opposed to keep coming back every four weeks.
But we're not going to, one thing, we're not going to design the project.
No, no, no. I get you, I get you.
What I can say is it has to be part of the house. It is not a separate unit by a garage. Bob, do.
You've got to be able to go outside. Go outside, not into the garage. Usually we have a problem with too many entrances. Not none.
Outside, you mean exterior. Outside. I mean, you can go off through the front door or through the slider. Those are ways outside of the house.
From the in-law suite into the main part of the house, not just going outside.
No, no. The mother-in-law wants to go out to the backyard.
Yep.
Through her own dwelling.
Yep.
Can do that.
There's a slider. You can do that. Leads right to the deck. And she can go out the front door. There's a front door as well.
You can't, the mother-in-law can't go to the kitchen without going through a garage.
That's weird.
Does it have to be continuous? And again, just when I look at the regs, it doesn't give me that information. It doesn't say anything about that. So this is what I'm hearing from the board. So does it need to be direct from habitable space from the main house to habitable space to the in-law?
Yes.
That's what we have most of the time.
That makes it a little easier. So I can come up with something. I mean, there's two windows right here that I could probably make that connection.
Where are the two windows?
Well, right with the window where it says off the deck. If I, again, if I have to move the house around, I can, I can make that connection to there. See where on page A4 where the letter B is, that little bump out?
Right.
That's a window there. I can convert that to a door and that'll be sufficient to the board to, I'll have to flip the house. I'll have to move the garage to the opposite side to, you know, now make that, the living room's going to be on that side. So should be able to leave the living room and go to the main house through.
I think that would be, don't you think?
Yes.
That would be perfect.
It connects to the main house.
Yep.
Everybody's in agreement with.
Can it have a door there or does it have to be continuous, open-cased?
It should be open case so that it's.
So it flows. Again, I just want to make sure that I'm clear to my architect so he draws it correctly. So when I come back the next time.
Yes.
Okay.
And let's just take a look at the plot plan and make sure that everything's good on that.
Yeah, he's got his stats in here too. I saw those. His percentages.
He meets all setbacks as well.
And the percentages are fine.
Less than 900, what is it?
644.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Okay. So you understand what.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, absolutely. But like I said, when I sit with the architect and, you know, they can be difficult sometimes. But when he's looking at the regs and what the zoning is requiring, we meet all that. Now, when I come here, I'm saying, okay, now I'm getting feedback from the board that states they want this. I don't want to argue with the guy. I get it. There's two, there's two sides. I mean, I got to go through you guys as well as I got to go through him. So I just want to be perfectly clear and crystal clear for him.
Yeah.
Say, because he's charging me obviously to draw this, do it this way. And then when I come back, it's sufficient to the board to approve the project, so.
Yeah, I think the, I agree that it's not a model of clarity, but the definition of accessory in-law suites has a separate dwelling located within a single-family dwelling.
Yep.
So the concept is that it's, as we've discussed, part of the single-family house. It's not a separate unit that has no flow into the main house. It's part of it.
And he looks at it's open for interpretation. So I've got a, again, but now it's clear now. So I'll, I can make those modifications. So not a huge deal.
Want to continue to the next hearing?
And that is on?
January 15th.
Yeah, that's fine. Give him some time with the holidays, get him to draw this. Is that the only requirement?
That's, everything else, I think.
Everything else looks great.
Fine, but.
Okay, just to make sure. I just want to make sure before I leave.
Yeah, the plot plan looked good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you understand, and for people watching at home, I also want them to understand.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally get it. I just want to be clear that the expectation of the board. So my communication to him is what you guys are looking for as well.
Okay. Could I have a motion to continue case number 2019, 960 West Street until January 15th at the request of the applicant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Suzanne, second by Jane. Any other discussion on continuing? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, so we'll see you back in the new year. Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
The next thing for this evening is Wall Street Development Corporation, Burns Ave Development LLC, 40B on 48 Burns Ave. Okay. Is the applicant here? Yes. So with us tonight, we have a number of people. Is Rick, is Rick coming tonight?
No.
Okay. So I'm sure he'll be watching this later for discussion. Okay, just so I can introduce the board, we have Drew Delaney, Jane Coffey, a good friend Suzanne Murphy who keeps me out of trouble, I'm John Lee, Bob Fitzgerald, Amy Messier, George Pucci, the town council. And with us, we also have Chris Elfin.
No, it's Paul Haverty.
Oh, Paul. Yeah, good to say it again.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman.
40B consultant who's going to help us through this 40B process. Okay, we also have in the audience a number of people from the town. We have Ashley Clark, I believe. Chief Bailey is in the back. Landis Hershey is here.
Tom Baller.
Carl is here also.
Deputy Chief Carl.
Okay, and deputy chief. So, okay, so one of the things for tonight, at the last ZBA hearing, the board discussed a number of unanswered questions and further outstanding issues, including fire access and other concerns. After initially objecting to a continuation at the public hearing, the applicant agreed to time extension in order that the board receive additional information so that there would be further opportunity for discussion of issues during the hearing. The goal of tonight's continued hearing is to answer outstanding questions to the greatest extent possible should the applicant insist upon closing the hearing tonight. The waivers and decisions that will be discussed during the public deliberations following the close of the hearing. However, if we are forced to close the public hearing tonight, the board will no longer be able to take testimony from any staff members, members of the public, the applicant, or anyone. So that being said, what we'd like to do is really try to wrap things up as much as possible tonight and get moving forward. And I've talked to town council. Keeping the hearing open is beneficial to the process, but we're fully aware that it's at the applicant's choice if he wants to, wants to close the hearing tonight. So that being said, we have, we had questions at the last hearing involving engineering and public safety. And we have a fire chief here tonight and I want to see if there's questions that we can get answered tonight with the chief here and the town engineer. So does anybody have any specific questions that they want to get going on this? Because I do.
You can start.
Okay. Okay, Chief Bailey, do you have a moment to come up? Deputy Chief Barry, good to see you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, Deputy Barry will be doing the speaking on behalf of the department. He has expertise in the area of fire prevention.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, good.
So a few things, one of the things with the 40B projects, a question of public safety comes up. And one of the concerns was turning radius of the fire equipment that the town has and safety aspects on that. Do you want to address where you feel we are and does the site adequately, is it adequately designed for your public safety equipment?
Sure. First and foremost, the documents that we received do not completely comply with 527 CMR-1, the Massachusetts State Fire Code.
Does not?
Does not. Correct.
There you go.
Rumors, communications to the board to advise that the plans must be stamped and signed by a professional engineer. And the most recent ones that were sent via email were not stamped. Most times, the one previous to that was stamped but not signed. I did do a cursory review of them and it does appear to show, the most recent ones show that our apparatus will comply with 527 CMR-1, provided that the curb does get pushed back at the opening of the proposed development.
That the curb gets pushed back?
Correct.
At the front?
Correct. That was, that was one of the items that was shown to us. So essentially the opening from Burns Ave going into the, into the new project must get opened up.
So I saw those, I saw those and it was just like freehand draw saying that the curb was being pushed back. Is that, or did you see some engineered plans that had it?
There was, there was an emailed engineered plan to us. I don't, I didn't provide that.
Okay. So it was an engineered plan that showed up?
Yeah. Not stamped, not signed, but.
Are you just asking, clarifying, are you referring to this correspondence from Green International? This is to the, I don't know if you've seen these or not, but these are.
Need to see the drawing.
These are the drawings. Are these the ones you're referring to or they're?
I can take a look.
Sure. Just wanted to make sure we're talking.
There was a few documents that was presented with me.
I believe this one would be the most appropriate one. If you see the track on this entrance right here. Looks like that track would come right up over the curb.
Okay.
So if this opening gets pushed back, will still, will keep us in compliance with the.
And by pushed back, you mean the curb should conform with this gray, the shaded area?
Correct.
So it should be pushed up.
Correct.
Which attachment is that?
This is November, a letter dated November 13th, 2019 from Green International to the applicant.
Okay, and so my question, maybe it's for, so what we see here is, this plan does not meet the requirement. This plan as shown here, does not. Do we have an updated plan that shows it? And this was last revised September.
This is stamped October 29th, as received.
Okay. But this is the last revised date. Okay. So the plan that we're dealing with does not, would not accommodate the fire safety equipment?
Further word of the code, correct. Required to cross over the central travel lane.
Okay. The other thing is, Towne Walpole has a subdivision rule that states no roads can be longer than a 750-foot dead end. What is your thoughts on, this is at the end of Burns Ave, which is more than 750 feet. And what's your thoughts on that as far as fire safety or public safety?
If a waiver, if a waiver has been requested through an application process, my, I've requested that the waiver not be granted on that, on that aspect. There are, admittedly there are towns, there are streets in this town where that does take place, but nothing that I've signed my name across.
Nothing new. There's old things. We have streets that have grades that we would never allow.
Correct. So my concern is accessibility with beyond that 750 feet.
Could you go into a little more detail as to what the concern is? I understand that there's a certain length. Is it a matter of getting people away from a dangerous situation over that length with only one way in and one out? Or what's the concern?
Sure. So the concern would be if there's a fire, it's going to take us that much longer to get to the house. It's going to take us, whether we have to carry all of our gear with us. If there's a medical, whether we have to carry all of our gear to the, to the house to take care of the medical and then carry the patient back to the ambulance. You know, and this could be for road work. This could be trees down. This could be for snow emergencies. You know, it's, it's admittedly a rare occurrence, but it, but also admittedly an occurrence where I've experienced myself. So it's something we haven't counted.
Can I ask about the snow aspect of it? Because the town's going to be out of this ballgame. It's up to an HOA. That's what I've heard.
Homeowners Association.
Homeowners, yeah. But I don't know how that affects you getting in there because we don't, the town's going to have zero control.
Right.
You want that widened where you're going to have to go in, which is not widened in our plans. But you would like it to be widened so your equipment couldn't get in. But what about snow? Because there's no snow removal. We asked for snow removal areas on the plan, but there are none. They're going to remove it themselves supposedly. And I don't know how that impacts trucks getting in and out.
Well, snow obviously reduces, the snowbanks obviously reduce the width of the roadway. And I believe the roadway is proposed at 22, 22 feet. 24, I apologize, 24. The fire code requires that fire lanes must be a minimum of 20 feet and maintained at 20 feet at all time. So there is a concern with snowbanks, obviously.
Yeah.
There is a concern with our access, with our apparatus complying with that access. That's why when the project was originally proposed, we requested that the end of Burns Ave be improved to a more of a standard cul-de-sac turnaround. Discussion with the applicant had committed to providing a hammerhead at the end. We'd, we'd requested again multiple times to the board that the hammerhead be included in the turn radius documentation. And to date, that hasn't been complied with or we haven't seen that. Because that is our concern if, for some reason, the snow does not get removed from the private development, then.
Now, how do you, how do you have control over that if you get there and it hasn't been plowed? Because the HOA doesn't bother to plow it or whatever the issue is. How, I mean, as a board, I'm frightened myself.
We adapt and we adapt to the situation, but it would admittedly, depending on the snow, could delay our response.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the minimum of 20 feet of clearance along the portion of the roadway that goes into the development. So sort of that long driveway that ends in the cul-de-sac at the end. That's proposed for 24 feet. And there's been discussion about, you know, whether there should be no parking along either side of that or perhaps only on one side. But it seems to me.
The code specifically, specifically states that parked cars cannot enter that 20-foot, that 20-foot width. It's a four-foot wide vehicle. It's not going to, the, it won't be able to comply with 527 CMR-1.
So for fire, for that purpose, then we would have to condition this to.
Prohibited parking throughout the roadway. Prohibited parking throughout the roadway.
Part of, I think, the board's responsibility is to make sure that there is adequate off-street parking to make sure that people are not parking on the street. Height of the buildings, these buildings, on the set of plans, it says 36 and a half feet, I think the way town actually measures them, it's 35 feet. Are you, what's your thoughts on residential area like this with 35-foot buildings?
I would defer a comment on that to the official comment on that to the building commissioner.
But from a fire safety...
Sure. Obviously, if there is a situation, obviously, the larger the building, the more work involved for the limited resources that we have. If you have a new apparatus that will make life working up at a height easier than what we've used in the past, so that's something that the town has provided us, and it is a benefit, but, you know, we do have structures in town that are larger than that.
Does anybody know the width of the buildings up here? The width?
These here?
Does it have it in the wall?
It's in the plans that just came out this week, the architectural plans. What's your question about, what's your question about width?
I just wanted to know how wide they are, because it's hard to tell online, like when they're all together.
Based on this, it looks like about 18 feet across the front face of one unit.
Yeah, but how much, like one building?
Right, so if it's 18...
Over 100, 108 feet. Any questions on fire safety?
Have you seen any plans regarding fire sprinklers for common buildings?
We've not seen any detailed plans on sprinkler systems.
And I guess my second question following that up would be, when you have an HOA that controls a fire sprinkler system for a common building, in your past experiences, would you say, is there some sort of mandate the town can put on that, or is that just solely left up to the homeowners association, to the goodwill of making sure it's in compliance?
It is required that there's an annual testing of the system. I would recommend to the board that that is a, some sort of enforcement...
Condition?
Condition on that, that would advise the occupants, the new residents, that this was something that they will need to encumber upon themselves.
Is that, so that's an annual flow test on the sprinkler system?
Annual test of the system, the fire alarm system, the monitored fire alarm system, that require access to each unit. So coordination with all the residents to have somebody inside, let them in to look at all, all the affected devices of the sprinkler system.
Are all those, like, the scope of those inspections, of those laid out in a document that we could refer to, or is that in 527 CMR or something?
That's per, that's per the NFPA codes, I can provide you specifically, which, there is a, there is a check sheet that they follow through, and I can provide you that document. We've seen varied, varied ways they go about it, you know, from a simplest, let us say, in that the system complies to a very detailed check sheet that, you know, catches everything and shows, spells that out, so...
I apologize, you said you have not seen plans from the developer?
Correct, we haven't seen, yeah, we haven't, that would come, that typically comes later on the process, when it's been, when the project's been reviewed, and then detailed construction plans come through, and then we go through it, that with a fine-tooth comb, and review device, you know, device locations, sprinkler calculations, and all the life safety issues.
Questions to the chair for fire?
Sure, I really appreciate you coming tonight and helping us, you know, work our way through some of these issues.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I, George Pucci from Town Council's office, I don't comment like a board member, but I do anticipate in that I would have to provide some recommended edits and additions to your draft decision. I was just looking, if you have enough clarity on it, that's fine, but on that 750-foot dead end requirement, I wonder if you want to try to find out what the recommended fix would be? In other words, what are the implications of denying that waiver? I think that would be useful to talk about if you agree.
Okay. Deputy Barry, do you want to come back and... Almost, almost got out.
You don't know a snack out.
But Town Council makes a good point. We, we talked about the 750-foot.
And I should just clarify, Paul corrected me, it's, it's not a waiver request on that, but it's a matter of if you want to enforce that regulation or not in accordance with the recommendation, and if not, what the implication of that would be? Because you're going to, you would have to have a, that's a local regulation related to subdivision, so you would have to have a compelling, you know, local public safety concern in order to have that upheld, where you to try to enforce that local subdivision regulation on this.
So, as Town Council pointed out, what would be the remedy to, I actually didn't ask the question, because I think it's pretty clear what the remedy is to a dead-end road, but what would you say is, from a fire safety, what is a remedy to a dead-end 750?
I would probably say, there's a couple options, but I'd go back to the same thing that you said earlier, we don't design the plans, we review them and provide comments off of those plans. The obvious shots, the obvious choices are to stop it at 750, or we'll provide an alternative access that's acceptable to the fire department.
Does that answer your question, George, or does it...
Yeah, it does, I think it's worthwhile to have further discussion on it, or at least talk to the applicant as well about it, maybe. Because what, what would that mean if you stopped? They don't have a second access.
No.
So, that option's out, and then where would that 750 feet cut off? Does he lose all of his buildings that way, or, you know, I, this is something that is worth discussing, because, you know, you're, you don't, you don't have a whole lot of jurisdictional authority that wouldn't get overturned potentially, but on compelling public safety concerns, those are the types of things that you really want to be extra careful about. So if, you know, if you could devise some type of potential fix for that, you know, with the benefit of the applicant's input, that would be the best way to go. Because just picture, if I just put a condition in there imposing this requirement, and, you know, the developer can make the case that, that leaves him with one building, that leaves you in a tough place, so I think it's worthwhile, at least some additional dialogue as to whether, you know, the board, what the board can do in terms of trying, trying to enforce that provision in accordance with the recommendation.
Do you have a follow-up question on that, or... I think we've heard, you know, from the deputy chief, what his recommendation, oh, the ways around it, but as, I think you said, and you've heard us say, we're not going to design your project for you. Anything else on follow-up questions?
Any answer, Barry?
Yep. So, this, Paul, please don't go too far, because we've got some questions, they're going to come through the chair, and then to the deputy chief from the, from the public.
He's the director.
So, your question, how are you this evening? This is about the fire safety.
More than familiar with Paul and what he's done, and he's done this, and I don't think you have a copy, but we had an interesting subdivision case about a year ago, and the applicant went over 750, had an opportunity to connect, chose not to, and I have his letter from back then on Wakefield, remember that, Paul? And what Paul explained is, and sprinklers weren't going to cut it, because Paul, as he said here, and that's when you point out stuff you don't necessarily think about, when you get that far out, if this car's blocking everything else, now you've got to hop all your gear. That's the bigger thing, is trying to get at it once it gets that long. So, he has maintained that since he's been deputy chief with us, and he hasn't waived it from it, so it's his opinion, since he's been deputy chief, this is a major issue. As a board, the planning board, we send our plans out to get input from all the boards, and that, in his professional opinion, and we, there were discussions on it, but I, we went with the professional, that sprinklers weren't going to cut it, so that is one issue. The other, a few other issues here, and in my experience, is every major project, and this has, what, 36 units? That's pretty big for a little dead-end street, but if you look around it, all the projects have been done. You may not notice it, but they all have a second egress. The most recent one now, and if you've been down Kendall Street, it's Polte. There'll be a gate for the fire department. They need that other way out if something ever happens. You see it up at Iorio Rodman, there's that gate that comes out by the security company. Royal Crest, another one, you may not notice it on Peachtree, I know you were John Suzanne, and they have it there. Bristol Brothers coming with an AQV up in Renma, same thing again. It's insisted by the fire department, and it's been consistent since Paul's been in place to get this out, some of those predated him, but when you got it that size, now we're talking something 46 feet, I mean 46 units, on a little measly dead-end street of 22 feet. You go down there now, you're lucky to get 19 feet with the snowbanks, we didn't have that much snow. The other issue is the fact that, I, you know, of, I will say, the lack of cooperation we seem to be getting is because we don't have his engineer here tonight. You can't even speak to the plant, there's nobody who can speak to the plan of a professional nature that's done it. So that's, that's a problem, the fact that he didn't stamp it and didn't address anything. So I keep hearing, well, maybe condition it later. How do we know it's ever going to comply? The other thing I heard from Town Council is, well, he may not be, how can he do it? It's not a foregone conclusion that you can build a 40B anywhere you want, you can't build it where you can't get at, so that should have been thought about ahead of time, so you just can't waive, the 40B is not, I don't believe, here to waive the magic wand, and we, no matter how the restrictions are, or how bad it is, it has to go. There's nothing that says it has to go unless it can meet a certain criteria. And my understanding from reading the law and everything, public safety, are you going to put 36 people in at a dead end, a half, half-street? He also indicated he wanted a cul-de-sac at the end of Burns, the reason being, if that was still in dispute, whether that's private, or if he moved it up, at least you'd have a shot of making a turnaround, and that would cut the distance down, but now, you, we heard it here tonight, talking about snow removal, and, well, let's face it, we all know where the cars are going to park, if you only got four parking places, everybody going in the cul-de-sac. And when does most of this stuff occur? You know, I don't want to speak necessarily for the fire chief, but they seem to have a lot of calls during the holiday seasons, especially for the ambulances, and that's where you're going to run into it, so now you're going to put 36 units at the end, and the other thing that keeps coming up on, sorry, Paul, deputy chief, is the fact that never once was, was it ever said how far it is from Pleasant Street all the way down. He kept requesting that, that was never put on the plan, and there's a reason for that. So what you have here is, you have safety issues, the deputy fire chief have said is a problem, not just on this, but everyone else, and they've had to solve it. Polte, if he didn't put it in, wouldn't have got it. Bristol, they're still in front of us, but if he refused, he would have been turned out. That's why we have these here, that's why we go to individual departments for this, and you've got to respect their opinions on this, you know. There were different opinions on board whether sprinklers would work, but what is said very simply is, hey, I got to get my stuff there. That's what we all think about, is trying to get your stuff there, and that's what it comes down to, and, you know, this has been, from day one, and, you know, when you pick a spot that your only other way out is next to a brook, then maybe you should have picked a different spot. So, that's all I have for this.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What are the hours, the manned hours of the East Wapole product station? None?
East Wapole is not staffed. With the exception of a storm situation or inclement weather, we may staff that with an engine company.
Okay, any other, Mrs. Campbell, questions, fire-related?
Yes. Kathy Campbell, Freddie Five, Burns Avenue, I just had a question about second egress. There were a number of comments made that fire safety egress was required, and I think at the last meeting, it was off the plans, but no one knew why it was off the plans, so is that off the table now, is that not required?
It's not, it's not shown on the plans, you mean access out to Union Street?
Well, there was, there was a requirement at some level from some, I think it was September 17th comment from the town that a fire egress was required, so I know that through conservation, they didn't want it going out of Union, over the, over the brook, but I wasn't sure if that was no longer a requirement, or did that...
Oh, it's, it's not on, it's not on the plan, so it's, the applicant has chosen not to have a second egress.
I'm sorry, I think it was a town comment from the fire department from September 17?
And I think he's backed that up, saying that...
It's not necessary.
No.
He said it was.
But is it, is it a regulatory, you know, it's desirable to have a second, second egress?
Okay, so it's not mandated?
No.
I don't know, the planning board just said he's not letting anybody, since he's been on, you have second egresses, correct? Since you've been signing off?
Correct, if there's been a waiver requested...
For years.
Requested a waiver not be granted, and an alternative has been presented, that's been supported with...
And we've had no alternative presented to us, right? That's, I think that's what we wanted to know.
If I understand correctly, earlier iterations of the project did show fire access out to Union, but then going through the wetlands process, that was removed, and that's a state law.
And it's not that, I mean, we don't...
Right, no, I'm just saying, it's...
It's not like an open field where we could condition that, we couldn't, we could not condition that. So, the plan does not have a second egress, and the board doesn't feel we could condition a second egress because there's no, we don't see a place for it, but does that mean that project's safe? Well, that's up to interpretation. Anybody else on fire safety questions? Okay, board members, we good?
We're good.
Thank you, deputy chief. Thank you, deputy chief.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand how, in the condition that you, that you put together November 6th, it requires, it's requiring the second egress off of the Union Street, so that will have to be one of those conditions?
That's not a...
F-18?
Um, is that a condition? Yeah, I don't...
Oh, it's a mobile one. Okay. Yeah, okay.
That's...
It's an old draft.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, next, we'll take engineering. We have town engineer, and he's provided comments throughout this process, so thank you for coming this evening. Do you want to come forward?
Good evening to the chair, members of the board. Carl Waldorf, town engineer with the Department of Public Works.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. For many years, we've been working with Maggie, and Maggie started working on this project, so it's nice to have you, you here, helping, helping us get through this process. What about, can you comment on water pressure for fire safety in that area? Do you know anything about water pressure in this area, is it a looped system?
The system will be looped, and it has been the practice, and I've seen a lot of documents. This all started before I did, but I believe it's the practice of sewer and water to have an analysis done on each development for water supply and for wastewater at the outset of permitting. So I am not aware of any water pressure issues there with this, with this proposal right now.
And we, have you reviewed the actual plans, the layout of this, this project? Are you familiar with it?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, as far as the road, road dimensions, they're at 20, 24 feet, and what would be the standard for town, town streets for a layout?
Planning board's regulations would be 26-foot wide. That is the only regulation that I'm aware of in town that would govern any type of a driveway or road development.
Any other questions?
I had a question, Mr. Chairman. Just, there have been discussions about repaving Burns Avenue down to the entrance to the development, and the sequencing of that, so as not to finish the road and then still have construction vehicles, you know, traveling over it. So I don't know, is there a standard sequence of construction for the roadway that the town would like to see followed in situations where initially it might be used as more of a construction access kind of road, and then ultimately finished as a permanent roadway?
So if there's, there is no standard procedure, I think every development is different. But one of the, one of the basic tenets is that any of these improvements that are linked with access, I should say, are in place by the time that people actually start to use this. So that's the best guidance, and I think, I've actually discussed this with Wall Street a little bit, and I don't want to say, speak for them, but at least in our discussions, they were in agreement with that. So that's one of the things that, that would try and achieve in that development, and you could possibly deal with that in a condition of approval.
So one of the conditions that the board has looked at is having sidewalks run from the proposed projects up to Pleasant Street. And how, how does town engineering work to put sidewalks where they don't already exist, if that was a condition that we, we imposed?
So without any design information on the road, and I'm trying to recall the width of Burns Ave right now, it's either 35 or 40 feet in layout, all right, not in pavement. So you would have to determine where the ownership is, where the right-of-way lines are, where the road sits within the right-of-way, and then see what kind of residual room there is to be able to put on a sidewalk, and also dependent on grading and whatnot. So there are a number of factors. Without a design on the table, I can't say much more. So those would be factors that would be considered in putting a sidewalk on Burns Ave.
Can you think of any cases where we've had a recent, and I don't know, in town, a recent development that had to do sidewalk improvements in the, you know, in their area?
That's a tough question for me to answer, because just having come on in September, I'm not familiar with the recent developments in town. I'm about 20 years dated on that.
Okay.
Did you look at the street lighting on the plan? Do you remember it?
Maybe.
Sorry.
No, so the lighting situation does not jump out in my mind for this development.
To follow...
Is there a specific question in regard to lighting?
I just didn't know if it was high enough, and if you felt it was...
Sorry, right now, I can't answer that. If you give me five minutes, I'll run upstairs and take a look at it and see what's on the plans. There may not have been that kind of detail.
There was a, there was a street light that was proposed in the swing radius by the traffic consultant, and it shows the extension of the ladder over the truck encroaching over the street light. It's on this diagram here, by the applicant's town engineer. Obviously, that light would have to be moved, and there's also a proposed light in the cul-de-sac. That would have to also be moved. Is there a payoff to moving lights back so a swing radius of a fire truck could make it around a cul-de-sac or a turn without, and I figured the answer is probably no, but is there a payoff to moving the lights back and reducing the visibility of the fire truck so it can make the turn safely, I guess, from the edge of the roadway?
I think the question could be answered by saying, okay, what motivated the location of the lights in the first place? In other words, was there a photometric study, and were we trying to provide a certain illumination within the development, so many foot candles, whatever? And said, okay, if you move that, are you impacting the intended lighting intent of the development? Or was it merely a decision? And I can't answer this because I wasn't in on the early review of this. Was there a decision that said we're going to light that intersection of Burns Ave, quote-unquote, or the end of Burns Ave approximately, with the proposed development driveway, and then put a light in the cul-de-sac, all right? Because those are traditional spots for lighting. So in other words, if you, if that was the motivation, then moving that light to get out of the swing from the development road back onto Burns Ave probably would not be a difficult, I think.
And have you seen a photometric study from the developer for the proposed project?
Not that I recall.
Has the applicant, have you provided photometric analysis? Because one of the things, the condition would be all low, low spillage, dark sky lights.
Yeah, caveat is you start moving the lights away from the street to give the ability of the fire truck to enter, but you've reduced visibility and I'm sure safety of vehicles traveling on the roadway, pedestrians trying to move out of the harm's way if there was a issue where the fire trucks were trying to enter there, you know? Without increasing the height of the lights and spilling onto a butters property.
It's almost as if we push it here, it's going to pop out over here, and vice versa.
It's just what I see from the drawings provided.
So we have, have some plans, architectural plans, that have been submitted showing the layouts of the dwellings. It's very preliminary, I think. These, I guess, are they, they're called, what are they called?
Referring to these.
Have you had a chance to review those?
I have seen them. There is not much we review on the architecturals, other than conformity with the footprints on the building and things like that. And possibly, and it wouldn't be on this level of detail, where the architecturals show the entry of the water and sewer connections and things like that. Over the many years I've been doing this, I've seen a lot of mismatches between site plans and architecturals, and I'm not saying that's the case here, but that would be one of the things we would look at on that. Beyond that, our review doesn't really deal with architecture.
And I know you're new on the job. Are you familiar with the flood plain in East Wapole at all, where the flood zones are located?
I am somewhat familiar with it.
And do you know if this is in a flood-prone area or part of the flood zone?
I believe, and it's been a little while since I've gone through the set of plans, but I think the flood plain is shown on the drawings. And the majority of the work, except for some grading, is outside of the flood plain. So I am, but I am familiar. I was involved with studies of this watershed after the extensive flooding in June 98 during my first tenure.
That's when Bird Park flooded and Pickrell Brook there and everything?
Oh, yes, it did.
So we, yeah, okay.
On this plan that you have for snow removal, I believe this was from...
That is from the, yes.
Has the conservation committee reviewed that, as far as pushing that snow into the wetland buffer or anything?
No, no, they haven't. That, that plan is trying to show it as an approximation of...
I understand.
Really a turnaround. The one thing, while I get a chance to address that, if you would, Mr. Chairman, we provided a memo to the board November 26th, and that, two items were discussed. One of them was the ability of Public Works to plow down Burns Ave, remove snow, drive down Burns Ave, go to the end, and then turn around their trucks so they wouldn't have to back out, or turn around and somebody, somewhere else, or whatever it is where there really isn't very much with. Likely that would also have to include trash removal, because those trucks would be in the same situation, even though they aren't DPW trucks, but they're going to go down there and provide municipal services as well.
I guess, when you say municipal services, do you mean to the people on Burns Ave or in the development?
Burns Ave. Possibly to the development, but not likely.
And you just referenced your memo of November 26th, and we do have, have that, where you did talk about snow storage and identify parts of the property that should be given to the town as easement, that's so that there would be access into that for vehicles. So that would definitely be a, a condition the zoning board would put on. Anybody else have, from the board? And I'll open it up to the public for engineering questions.
Mr. Conroy? Once again, we'll be on hearing of it, and the last thing you start talking about is the snow. I've been plowing that for 23 years. Only place to town dump the snow is at the end of Burns Ave, the only place to put it. They come straight down and push. Where does it go now? You can't go to the right, the camels, because there's a rock. Go to the left, it's my driveway. There's nothing there for provisions for how the town's going to plow that. So that's, that's a big issue, is the contractors, it's not up to them or the town themselves to move it out of the way. They're just going to plow to the end. It's a driveway, we all know that. Town doesn't plow driveways. So you've got a big mound of snow that's going to come from all the way from Pleasant down, and that's always been a big issue down at that end of the bus. The other question was, you talked about the sidewalks and layout and that stuff. As long as I'd been around doing this, we've never had an issue, only because when you do the design, you have a 46 layout, and you got sidewalks. Sometimes on either side, we change that to one side because they weren't using them, but, so you have the 26-foot road, 10 feet, 10 feet, and you always, we always had no problem putting sidewalks where they need to be. Now, what I will say is, Kyle had brought it up, center lines. And if anybody is familiar with Common Fitzcorner down on Summer Street, when that got done, it turned out the center line was not in the center of Summer Street, and that created all sorts of problems. Because you went, when you come down, it went like this. Well, actually, it was over on Joel Russo's property, and that became a big issue. So one of the problems is, in the oldest streets, is the center line of the road is not necessarily the center line of the layout, which creates problems. Now, the other thing I have not seen here, it's just been somewhat addressed on here, that, you know, we're going to do these improvements in sidewalks. I know that there'd have to be a procedure, and this would be bonded, because you'd be on a, what you'll do on the town property, I won't even get into our little issue, but the question, I guess I would ask Kyle Waldorf, if I would, about, is, it could be a real issue. How would it be, how does the process get resolved if, in fact, it's not down the center? It's 10 feet to right or left? How does, how's that whole process going to get resolved? And the other thing I really get concerned as, you can condition a lot of stuff, but when you don't have it shown, and we as butters, do we, are we in this process at all? Or one day we go out, and there's a new sidewalk that maybe shouldn't be there? Do we get any input on it? And that's, that's the issue I see with this. Had this been fully developed, showing exactly where the center lines were, exactly people's property and where they proposed to it, I think you could speak to this. And, you know, we could all see as residents or butters where it's going, but I don't believe you can. And I have to ask Kyle, if I could, the process, or if there's enough information, or are we going down a rabbit hole here with, with just such limited information on a street improvement for a town street? So I, if Kyle, let Kyle speak.
I'll ask that. So can you answer the question, how the town would oversee improvements to a road such as, such as this?
So I agree with Mr. Conroy. The current submitted plan set doesn't deal with any, showing any of the other, the remainder of Burns Ave, other than what, where the, essentially where the public way ends. So based on what's submitted and this information, and I don't really have any other information, we don't know where that roadway sets, whether it's in the middle and whatnot. So it would need to be a design, there would need to be a design for that, to be able to execute the construction of a sidewalk on the remainder of the road. If it turned out that the road was shifted to one side and it couldn't be put on that side, then I guess the resolution would be to come back, it would have to come back to the Board of Appeals. All right, whether it be a minor modification, or a, or a major, or whatever it is, it would have to come back and said, okay, this is what's going on, when this was actually designed and looked into. Your intent couldn't be carried out because the road was already over all the way on that side.
Right. So that, that's a concern that we have, that we could put on a condition that can't, you know, can't be met.
I agree. I also have that concern.
Okay, Jack?
A point to make, right now Burns Ave, most like missed it all the years, does not have any drainage. And I believe every time we do a street, we bring it up to town standards, you have to have drainage. There's a going. Right? That's a big, big thing. Isn't what do we do on all subdivisions, or even AQVs or site plans? We put them underground, or we put them in a retention basin? What happens, and I, my opinion is, the town would not waive drainage, because it's going to improve it. Why would you, waiving drainage is not the prudent thing to do. So now, there's another big issue, is if you find that you're going to have to make improvements, so it has to have the drainage and catch basins, where are those going to dump into? And you're not allowed to dump into the existing, you have to go, because I figure that it's always overtaxed anyway, so you end up with either underground somewhere, the big tanks that you see go underground usually in, what are they called, malls or big parking lots, or you end up with, with ones with retention basins. But how does that get resolved? Right now, it's not even on the plan, and we know it's going to have to be. That's, you can condition all you want, but that's out there. That's a big, big, big issue. Putting pavement down, anybody can do, raise a catch basin, put another hydrant in. But as far as the drainage, when you actually go to do it, good, we can put catch basins in, we can drain it right.
in, we can drain it right, but where does, where does it drain to?
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that, because... Any other engineering questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Hey. What else we have? We've got a Conservation here?
Yes.
Landis, how are you?
Hi.
So, as you approach, one of the things, Conservation has issued an order of conditions for this proposed project, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The order of conditions was issued under the Massachusetts Wetlands.
Okay. And did the applicant appeal?
Both the applicant and the butters appealed.
Okay. So that's going to be tied up for...
Right, so D, it goes to DEP. DEP does a site walk, they do a review of the order, and they'll issue a decision, either superseding order, or they reprimand it back to the Conservation Commission. There's a couple of different ways they could go.
So one of the things that the zoning board was going to do is, any conditions that were, the entire order of conditions was going to be part of the zoning board decision. We discussed this last time, I think. Do you remember that, George?
Yeah, I remember it. I, I don't know if you're going to get to this part, but I had been hoping that the Conservation Agent was going to make recommendations as to the local requirements. The, the state part, you don't have any jurisdiction over, so yeah, you'll incorporate that. I mean, query, how you're going to incorporate it when it's under appeal. So, you know, would behoove everyone to find out what's going to happen with that appeal. Mass DEP doesn't just sit on these, they'll schedule a site visit right away.
Right, there's a site visit already scheduled for December 12th.
Yeah. So, so there's that issue, and, you know, so, you know, would benefit everybody to see how that comes out. And then, and then an entirely separate issue is, you're, you're sitting as the Conservation Commission with respect to your local bylaw and regulations. And I think Ashley had followed up since the last hearing to alert Landis of that and see if, if there were recommendations.
How I would address that is, it's not always clear cut. We, we've had, in the past, a 40B Moose Hill where it was appealed, and we had an order, and DEP actually encompassed our, our order into that decision. So sometimes it's not really clear to pick, this order's under the bylaw, this order's under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, to determine, sometimes they're, they're covered under both. I mean, the difference between the bylaw and the Wetlands Protection Act specifically is the 25-foot no alteration area and isolated wetlands. So that's, that's specifically the difference between the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the local bylaw.
So that would be the key part that I, I would recommend, that you get input from. What would, what would be your recommendation with respect to that 25-foot no alteration zone?
Right, and I can do that, because some of the conditions specifically address how that should be planted, what type of soils and vegetation and stuff like that. But there, that also could, we've made an argument that that's covered under the Wetlands Protection Act because of its location adjacent to the wetlands associated with Trappel Brook. So if DEP determines, yes, you are right, it is covered under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act because of Trappel Brook, they could take it under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, and it might not just be a bylaw issue. That's why I'm saying I can't go through the orders right now and say, this is this, this is that, because DEP sometimes, kind of depends how they interpret what, what we've interpreted. So it's a little hard to do that right now, specifically.
Are there some recommendations that you would have for conditions that the zoning board could put on for, for conservation issues?
I, so I guess I'm trying to be clear of your question.
So, say, one of the things that, in the buffer zone...
Piling up the snow.
Okay?
Right, so as far as the snow removal, I, I was just looking, what they have to comply with is the DEP snow removal policy. So it's specifically, DEP has a, has a policy saying you can't push snow into the wetlands, you can't push it into a, a waterway, you can't push it into a basin. It has to be contained in an area where you're not going to be introducing contaminants like oil and grease and grit and dirt into the wetlands. So they have a specific policy that you could reference in your, in your decision.
Is that a condition of the order that's under appeal now? Do you know?
I believe it is. I can't remember what, we usually put that in there, but that's a, that's a DEP requirement, it's a state requirement.
Landis, what about chemicals that these people might be using at their, on their units, like fertilizer or salt or, you know, any kind of chemicals that the, that the humans might use on their properties?
Right, so we, we often include those conditions, and we do, we did this time regarding fertilizers and herbicides, and for them to comply with the state regulation, I think it was just CMR 11, requiring that soil has to be tested prior to using phosphorus and nitrogen.
And that's in your conditions now?
That's in our condition, and again, the reason why I don't want to pick and choose is because that was in our decision for Moose Hill, and DEP didn't say, well, that, this is not a Wetlands Protection Act condition. They didn't take it out. So they thought it was okay. So that's why I hesitate to pick and choose the condition which fall under the bylaw and which fall under the Wetlands Protection Act before DEP says this is not appropriate. I, I think, as far as the applicant's appeal, it, it was based on how we define the removal of the material on site. So that's what he was...
And so I recall the material was going to be crushed up and used as roadway base? Is that...
Right, so the Commission did discuss this, and they felt that their order, when they were discussing the degraded riverfront area, is it degraded, is it not? What level of degraded is it? When, when they went back and reviewed it even after the first order conditions, several members felt that the material that was there was, needed to be removed. That it was not beneficial to the riverfront area, wouldn't be beneficial to a residential area, that it needed to be removed. So they customed their, their order with the understanding that it would be removed and not be used on site. Then the plans also referred to the removal of unnatural material, I think is the wording, that's on the plans that you have, in the 25-foot no alteration area. It specifically states it'll be removed from site. So our conditions sort of echoed that, that the unnatural material located in the 25-foot no alteration area, as well as in the riverfront area, should be removed from site unless it's to be used under paved surfaces. And that's what the Commission wanted. It could be used on site if it was under paved surfaces, but not as backfill for foundations. And I think that's the difference with the applicant.
So are there local bylaws that you would like to see the zoning board can reference as far as conditions?
Well, I, I would say that the 25-foot no alteration area should be a conditions, even though it's on the plan, and, and the applicant seems like he's agreed to maintain the 25-foot no alteration area and restore it, but you, you, yes, include it in your conditions.
Anything else that should be included? It will work with you in the future on this, but, obviously, but it's...
I mean, other than taking all our conditions and, and including it in your decision?
Yes, which is what, what we talked about at the last...
Yeah, you still need clarity, though, on the 25-foot, that's not the state of the application at this point. You're seeking a waiver of that local requirement and going only under the State Wetlands Protection Act, which has no such requirement. So you've got to be careful, you know, if, if the hearing's only going to be open tonight, we really need to distinguish between what, what the Commission, you know, recommends waiver or, or not waiver of, and what, what the agent thinks might be subsumed within that DEP process. That's sort of a mix with what you, how you conditioned it.
So I think the Commission's memos and correspondence with the Board all, all the way through has been not to give the waiver on the 25-foot no alteration, alteration area, that that is something that is important to the area, important to the wetlands, and they did not want the Board to give a waiver on the 25-foot no alteration area.
And is Trappel Brook a particularly sensitive environmental area, or is it what...
Yes, so Trappel Brook, which is a distance away from this particular property, but the wetlands adjacent to Trappel Brook are the wetlands that are located on the, on the east side, west side.
East, yeah, east.
Not near Pickarole Brook, but the other, other side. Yes, Trappel Brook is considered a cold water fishery under Fish and Wildlife Services, and I believe it's also going to be, except that's a little unclear, become a cold, cold water stream under DEP's requirements. So yes, there's trout. There's trout in the stream, there's trout upstream, and it's the only cold water stream i- in the area. There's, most of the cold water streams are out in western Massachusetts, not in the Bos, around the Boston area.
The 25-foot no disturb area, is that, the area that's proposed to be disturbed, is that for the utilities running out to Union Street? Is that the only area that's...
Um, no. So the 25-foot no alteration area is, as you're coming into the property from Burn's Ave, it's on, it's on the right, the wetlands that are on the right. It's the area where presently there's a lot of man-made material, there's concrete and other stuff there, which the applicant is proposing to remove and restore with clean material, and then do some plantings.
Okay.
And then maintain that area as a vegetated 25-foot. The area that is, goes where the utilities are, are going to be installed out to Union Street, that is part of the riverfront area to Pickarole Brook, so Pickarole Brook is a, is a river because it flows year-round. So it has a 200-foot riverfront area. So that's the, the riverfront area. It's also, the flood plain is along Pickarole Brook, the 100-year flood plain.
Thank you.
Suzanne just asked about, do you have, did the applicant submit planting plans to you for the, the buffer zones?
Yes, so the, the applicant did submit planting plans for the 25-foot no alteration area. We did ask for some additional information because it was somewhat unclear of what was going to be put back after the foreign unnatural material was removed. So we, we specified more in the conditions than that, those I would encourage you to include in, in your conditions of the type of material that's going to be put back there. Plantings will be...
You have the clear version now.
Excuse me?
You have the clear version now.
No, we're ask, we're asking for him to submit a more detailed plan...
So you don't have one right now?
Prior to starting.
Are there any other local conservation bylaw issues that you think the zoning board should be addressing?
I, I, I guess if you're pushing me to say, I would say not specifically, because if you look at the bylaw and the regulations, and you look at the Wetlands Protection Act, the difference is that 25-foot no alteration area is really what it boils down to. The, the other ones, right, are, are, can go either way, really.
Yeah, I think you treat the 100-foot buffer as a resource area, but, so, what I think you're saying that, right, what I think you're saying that as part of that DEP process, you'd sort of mixed the two, like, in other words, do you have, do you have regula, do you have conditions in your order that have requirements with respect to that buffer zone that you think will be resolved, you know, with your order? Or do you have concerns concerning protection of the 100-foot as a resource area that are not covered in your DEP order?
Right, so that, that links into the, to the 25-foot no alteration area. So the bylaw for a long time has taken in the 100-foot buffer zone in kind of, I'd say, wishy-washy language, honestly. So we, we wrote our regulations to make that a little clearer by stating that the first 25 feet of the 100-foot buffer zone is really the most crucial area to remain unaltered because it has a relationship with the wetlands for water quality, for wildlife habitat, for flooding, pollution protection, and that, the, that the Commission, in order to make it stronger in the regulations, was specifying more the 25 feet, not the whole buffer zone, the whole buffer zone. The, the rest of the buffer zone is usually reviewed as far as jurisdiction, but the first 25 feet is what is protectable.
Just to clarify for, for your board is, so what that means is, so you have a wetland bordering vegetated wetland, which is a jurisdictional area under both the state and the local. Then you have a buffer zone to that bordering vegetated wetland. The state does not treat that as a resource area, the 100 feet.
But the town does.
But the town does. So the, the state would not even require a notice of intent if you've just got buffer zone work, unless there was some proven effect on the resource area.
The state would require the notice of intent, they just, you could build right up to the, you can build right up to the, the wetlands line.
Yeah, I think you could do a request for determination of applicability on that, but in any event, so, but you would, they treat the 100 feet as a, as a resource area. So, you know, that, that would be the question, is, other than the 25-foot no disturb zone, is there any condition related to treating that 100 feet as a resource area that you would like to see imposed? In other words, is there some construction in there that raises question about what the effect will be on the wetland?
Well, I, if, I, I mean, one, one of the reasons why the Commission wanted all the foreign material to be removed off-site was so that what remained on-site in the buffer zone was clean material. Except what's under paved surfaces. Material can migrate into the wetlands.
Would you be, how would you condition it? Would you require testing, or...
Well, our, our condition in our order is that all the foreign material be removed from site unless it's being used under paved surfaces.
So then you think the 100 foot is, you think the 100 feet is covered in your existing order?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, all right. I think that clarifies that.
How is that monitored?
I'm just going to say, how?
How's that monitored?
How is what monitored? That all the materials should be removed?
Right.
Well, I, I guess as any project is monitored, that I do periodic site visits during construction.
Do they have an LSP overseeing this kind of material removal? Licensed site professional?
I believe we put that in our order.
Because the applicant did have an LSP in here.
But an L, right, an LSP is not necess, I mean, the LSP is, is usually there to make sure, if I, if, I mean, this is not my expertise, that they are complying with the mass contingency requirements.
If we're talking about materials going up, we're talking about materials being disposed of off-site, that's, that's what we're, we're getting at.
Right, so the material that's in the riverfront area, that's coal, ash, and metal, and, and the material that's... and, and the material that's in the 25-foot no alteration area, which is a mixture of concrete and that stuff, is supposed to be removed.
You know, I have a question about the, my concern is the same as Suzanne's, and that is, in the day-to-day business here of, you know, constructing and crushing up all this material all this way, who is going, if anybody, to be on-site with any regular basis to see that this material is in fact only going underneath the paved surface? Or will it be used as fill, so that you could put a little bit of sawdust or gravel or something over it? That's my concern. Because unless there's somebody there, you can condition for Natalie, you know, till the end of time, but we don't have any, we don't have any way to monitor that to make, so the condition is only good as our ability to monitor that. And who exactly does that?
Again, with any project, our orders are written, yes, that they have to comply. We don't go there and stand over them for the whole project to make sure that they're complying constantly. I mean, this, this works with also sedimentation to the wetlands and erosion to the wetlands. Their requirement is to put up a salt fence and erosion control and to put it up in a way that prevents sediments from going into the wetlands. We don't have enough people hours to go out there every rainstorm, every time something happens, to monitor if material gets into the wetlands or into the streams. So it, it's, they have to comply with the law, just like everyone else to comply with, you have to stop at a red light, you can go at a green light.
No, I understand that, but, yeah, I see this is a little bit different. I see this as potentially toxic junk or whatever, being used.
We have asked them to, you know, remove the material first and to do the plantings first, and to let us know when, so there would be some monitoring, but it wouldn't be 24/7.
No, I wouldn't expect that.
Are your plantings all listed in your order? So that we can utilize that?
The plantings are on the plan, provided by the applicant.
You have a plan with plantings?
The plan set, it was approved by the commission.
Okay. So we can just utilize that for?
Yeah, it should be the same set that you receive, I believe.
With the proximity of Pickarole Brook and the proposed processing of material on-site, crushing stone, concrete, by the applicant to use under roadways, does any sort of dust or airborne material propose a threat to the wetland or the brook or the buffer zone? And if so, have they proposed any mitigation tactics to control that?
That issue was not specifically addressed at our hearings.
Are you talking about dust control, George?
That would be one.
Is that something that you've seen before conditioned, that they have to have dust control?
Usually on a larger site, there could be a condition regarding dust control, but not on such a small.
Because it's a sensitive area, I mean.
Anything else?
Does that wish you have any other questions?
I think, are there any neighbors or abutters that have questions conservation-related? Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board?
Sure.
As I went back and I considered your earlier line of questioning regarding the improvements to Burns Ave and what we don't know about it, and I considered the abutter's testimony on longstanding time of ownership, I thought about when I first looked at the plans and looked at the drainages, if you look at, and you have a set there, Burns Ave actually ends, the private portion actually ends somewhere in the intersection with the proposed development The drainage, there is drainage on, within the development for the, that handles water on the extent, the proposed extension of the private part of Burns Ave, and the turnaround at the end, there's catch basins there. And I recall looking at that and making sure that the grading worked and that the water went to the catch basins, et cetera. And looking at the drainage report actually to see how the calculations had been done. What I do not recall, and it's good that the conservation agent Landis is here, and I may be going over ground that was already covered, is that there was no anticipation that, that that end of the road and that drainage system would handle the water from the remainder of Burns Ave. So considering the testimony tonight that said it's very possible, and think about this, after the road was paved up and perhaps improved some sidewalks are put in, maybe even curb put in there on the existing part, public portion of Burns Ave, that water all goes down towards the development, goes into that drainage. A, it may not have been designed for it, B, there's no public right in that right now, so I wanted to raise that question and said that's another potential need. We may not, may be precluded from running that water into Burns Ave. The alternative then would be for the town to construct drainage somewhere else. As the abutter pointed out, the drainage in the existing streets down there is old, probably taxed, and there's been difficulty that I understood in my earlier look at this over 20 years ago. So this is an area, this is an issue that was not anticipated, that was really surfaced in the testimony tonight, and I wanted to, A, let the board be aware of this, and B, if the conservation agent had some experience, because this peer review had transpired before I came in, then she could build backfill and maybe, maybe I, there's something I don't understand, but I wanted to bring that issue up.
Thank you. So what we want to make sure is we don't get a new, new and improved Burns Ave paved nicely, and then a giant lake down the end of, that's, is that the concern that you're talking about?
I guess potentially a lake, but a revelation after this is approved and under construction that we can't drain the public portion of Burns Ave.
Right.
Or that if we do, it's overtaxing the drainage system that was constructed for the development.
Now, being a little, you know, visually dramatic, saying a lake, but the water's got to go someplace, and it's going to go down off of Burns, Burns Ave, and, you know, you're the engineer, if water flows down.
Well, water goes downhill, that's correct, and making it go the other way is a difficult task.
Okay. Landis, do you want to comment on that?
I'm not sure if I can fully answer the question. I know that, you know, stormwater management was reviewed for the site, and with most projects, it's the responsibility of the applicant to handle their stormwater, so that's how a project is reviewed. I don't remember the issue coming up of stormwater coming from Burns Ave onto this project, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, it's at the end of the street, it's downhill street, it's, that's a low, it's a low spot right there, the swamp is right there. So I guess the question is, again, if the zoning board conditions road improvements, and the applicant has said that those were something that, you know, would be a condition, how, you know, how do we prevent having a nice new road and no place for the water to go? Does that make sense?
Right, well, usually when the consultant's reviewing the stormwater, they look at the watershed and they, they do analysis of where the water is coming from, you know, the watershed, subwatersheds, and then design the stormwater management system based on that. So it seems that it would be rare for all of a sudden new information to come that, that it wasn't seen before, that more water would be coming from Burns Ave onto the site that wasn't designed.
I'm not saying more water, I'm not saying more water, I'm saying the same amount of water, but if that hasn't been considered, because the applicant is only considering his site.
No, I would be surprised if that wasn't considered, but I couldn't answer it specifically because they, they look at the watershed map and where the water is coming, and where is it going, and how they have to handle it, so.
The applicant's engineer is not here tonight, so.
Right, Phil Paradis, who is also the consultant for the zoning.
No, he's, he's actually the peer review.
Peer review, yeah.
Yeah, he's not here, and also, Rob Truax.
Right. And I can't specifically answer that question, other than I don't recall that being an issue.
Okay. Thank you, thank you both.
Thanks, Landis.
Okay. Yes?
Um, Liz Barrows, under Heaton Ridge. So at what point in time, it's been discussed that, you know, obviously we can't have somebody on, on-site all the time reviewing the process of the removal of materials? But I guess my concern is that I would like the board to have a little foresight in thinking, at what point do we weigh a developer's past experiences within the town when making a decision on a project like this? I don't know if I can speak clearly. My, from what I've seen on video of conservation minutes of previous meetings, the applicant has had previous, another development in town where he did not comply with the order of conditions, and it was, it went on for an extensive period of time, and the conservation committee just never did anything about it. So he has a history of not doing what he was supposed to do, and the kind of negligence and disletting, the same behavior, like agreeing to, you know, place orders and different air conditions, that he's just not going to follow again. I can understand if someone hasn't had strikes, but it's already been happening.
So one of the things, zoning's about property, not people, and I look at, this is me, we're looking at this, this as a property, not as a, it's not a person, you know, involved with it. It's actually an LLC, and he could turn around and sell it tomorrow, can sell the permit, whatever. So we have to look at it as, as the property. And George, do you have anything else to add on that?
No, I think you said it. Well, I mean, you can, you're going to try to condition your permit as best you can with monitoring requirements and things like that.
But it's not based on an individual because it's about the property, not the person.
Okay, so I would just request?
We want to make sure it's, it's, it's clear, it's tight, so that, you know, somebody in the future picks up this permit and they understand what's been agreed to, and it's clear. That's, that's what, that's our goal.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Ashley, you want to, oh, Landis?
I know this isn't pertinent to what you guys are deciding, but I wanted to clarify such a statement, okay? We have ongoing enforcement action on a project that was, or the commission has been recently.
Yeah. Enforcement action isn't always visible to the public, maybe? So, so, yeah, so you can talk to Landis about what enforcement action is being taken on another project, but, no, that's a separate issue. But I understand you wanted to defend your.
Just clarify.
Right. Okay, Ashley.
I'm so glad that so many folks got to come, and I hope that you got a lot of answers to your questions.
Definitely.
Because this is really probably going to be our last shot at providing you information. So I just have a list of things that I wanted to make sure got brought up. One thing, since I don't think we're going to have time to get into the full waiver list tonight, I.
We have no, we're not intending to do that tonight.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's going to be a long night. I think we still have another two things on the agenda after this. But I do want to provide the applicant with an opportunity to give us any last comments that he may have about the waivers. Particularly, as I was kind of going through them, there's a waiver request for the setbacks for the decks. He'd like to go within five feet of the property line. I'm particularly concerned looking at that kind of pinch point on buildings one, two, and three, because it's a second-story deck, I believe that's being proposed, and I think the impact to those of Butters would be pretty serious. The rest of the site plan, it looks like he'd be able to comply with a 10-foot sideyard setback, so I just want to give the applicant a chance to respond to that. I think without any real compelling reason for you to grant that setback, staff would not be in support of it. So I don't know if you have any questions on that.
I, I will, I just wrote that down, and we'll ask the applicant, do you want to step aside and I can ask the applicant that, or?
I can go through my, the rest of my laundry.
How many more do you have?
Just a few.
Okay.
Probably looks scarier than it is. And then I wanted to bring up, we didn't get anyone here from the police department, but if you had any questions that you wanted to kind of put into the record that maybe the applicant could respond to, this would be a good opportunity for that, I think. I wanted to also touch base about trash and recycling. A practice I've seen that is pretty effective in other towns is to place a condition that at 80% occupancy, the trash and recycling plan is reviewed to see how well it's working, and that there be an opportunity to, to change things, to make it work better, if that's necessary. I wanted to also ask, I think, I think I'm learning more and more about conservation wetlands every day, but I wanted to ask council if it would be possible to have peer review, review the final kind of plans on the 25-foot no alteration area? I think when Landis was speaking, she mentioned that they've requested more details, so I don't know if we can have someone review all of those things. And then the same with the stormwater management plan, if that's something that could be peer reviewed?
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, it's late in the process, so if you don't, if he doesn't keep the hearing open a little bit longer, you know, and we'd be happy to limit, if, if there was an agreement on that, we could limit the issues as to what's being held open.
Okay, I guess I was asking, you know, during the building permit phase, when he was finally kind of finished with his plans.
Okay, so that would be a condition to have during the final planning and submittal of plans to, for construction, to have peer review on, on something like that?
Well, so ideally, that would have happened, you know, earlier in the stages. I don't, my question is whether or not we can do that? I'm hearing a, no.
On the final plan.
I mean, typically, it's, it's good to use the same peer reviewer on the, in that conservation process as it is with the board, so what I had assumed was going on was Phil was sort of serving that role, but in terms of review of the final plans, I know that the board can have designees or require a certain amount of, if there's required expertise to demonstrate compliance or something, you can't put it, subject to a subsequent approval, but you could have it, that there would be a peer review, review of final plans or conformance.
Yes, yes. I guess the first question is, what exactly did the Conservation Commission do with regard to the 25-foot no disturb as part of their order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act? Did their, did their decision essentially prohibit any work within that 25-foot area?
Yeah, I think Landis can definitely speak to it better than I can, but.
Hi, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear your question.
I was asking, because I haven't seen the order of conditions that the Conservation Commission ordered, but did that order of conditions prohibit any work within that 25-foot no disturb area?
No, because what we want him to do and what, what the plans reflect, the applicant doing, is taking out the man-made material within the 25-foot no alteration and replacing it with good quality soil and topsoil, and then planting. So it wouldn't have. So it wouldn't have made sense for us to say, no, no work. So that's what is shown on the plan that was approved by the Conservation Commission, to remove the concrete and the metal and all the other foreign material from the 25-foot no alteration area and then to put back clean fill and topsoil and plant.
So I would recommend that.
Which I think we're all.
Of the 25-foot no alteration be allowed, except for what is consistent with what was allowed under the order of conditions.
But it's still subject to what's gonna be planted there.
Right, and then, and then the end part is that becomes a no alteration area. So I think our order includes some signage saying, no alteration beyond this point, watershed of Trappel Brook. So it's restoring the area back to a viable buffer zone area, 25-foot buffer zone, and then, and then having it as a no alteration area in perpetuity. So there would be no additional encroachment in that. It would be left natural. It wouldn't be mowed. It wouldn't be, the shrubs wouldn't be cut down in two or three years or whatever, but it would be maintained as a natural area.
So certainly the board could have its peer review engineer review the final plans to ensure that they are consistent with the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission.
So if the Conservation Commission, being me the agent, is reviewing it, you would also then hire a peer reviewer to review it?
Yeah, it wouldn't really make sense.
I'm kind of not, I don't understand why you would propose that.
No, you wouldn't. You, I mean, typically you do it through a certificate of compliance. So, you know, here's what we propose, okay, here's what the order required. The agent goes back and inspects it and then the commission decides whether to issue a certificate of compliance on the order. And then, and then you would put in anything that you want to preserve or add in perpetuity so that you're not waiving any conditions in that certificate. But, I mean, my concern is, what's the status of the DEP appeal in terms of your order with respect to the no alteration zone? You know what I'm saying?
So that wasn't part of the appeal.
Okay.
Part of the appeal is the removal of all the material from the site.
Yeah. So we, the board could just have the condition consistent with the conditions with respect to the 25-foot and then have that subject to inspection. I don't think a peer review is necessary.
Right, right. The order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act should include that area to be restored. That wasn't part of the appeal, but he was refusing to do that. So I, as the agent, would be reviewing the activity and reviewing the plans and reviewing everything so it was done the right way, reviewing the plan that, it was just, there was a difference between like the, the topsoil, the amount of organic matter that should be replaced there. There was difference in, that was one of the things that was appealed.
So I just revised my notes here. Conservation will review any, anything in the 25 no alteration zone for compliance at the end.
That provides a good safety valve for you because then you don't have to worry about however the DEP appeal comes out because that's gonna be an enforceable condition in your permit.
I think that would be consistent between both orders and your decision, the DEP order, or if it comes back to conservation and your decision to have it handled the same way.
And it's not gonna cost the applicant any money having a peer review or anything like that. It's, I think this is a better way to do it. It will fall on you, as you would review other projects at the end.
Correct.
We can turn it back over to Ashley.
Sorry, I didn't mean to send us on a tailspin there. And then how do we feel about the storm water management?
Typically, it would be mass DEP stormwater and what did, you know, did Phil comment on that? The peer review and stormwater management issues?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't something that raised big concerns at the time.
Is that a land?
Are you also gonna review it?
Landis also. So with the Wetlands Protection Act ordered conditions that's issued, DEP has standard orders that the stormwater management system, infiltration systems, the basins, all need to be reviewed by the engineer and as-built, approved and submitted to the Conservation Commission upon completion of the basin. So, you know, if, so generally that would come to me, to my department. Also, the town engineer would review that as well, and that's generally how it's handled. We also need a stamped certified plan from their engineers saying that it's been built according to the plan and all the pieces are there. So it, you know, it's up to the board if you want to throw in a peer reviewer or not. I mean, it could be beneficial to have a peer reviewer onsite when these systems are installed. Might take some pressure off of that engineering department, but Carl could maybe answer that a little better than me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then there is one more. I just want to make sure I heard correctly from FIRE about the access there. What I heard was that we need to condition to make sure that there's signs not allowing any parking there and that that responsibility would fall on the HOA. But I think it's important that we have a mechanism at the town level to enforce that. I don't know if we could cite the HOA for non-compliance or something else, but I think that's a really important thing to condition, especially if they're using that cul-de-sac as their only turnaround and aren't gonna have a proper turnaround at the end of Burns Ave. So I just wanted to highlight that one with an asterisk and a star. But other than that, I think that covers most of the things. I don't know if the applicant wants to respond to all of the things and we, I think we have some dates circulating about when to continue the hearing too.
Okay, so the last one, you said it would be a condition that, I guess, I'm just looking for an enforcement mechanism. How do, how does the town enforce a homeowners association to make sure nobody parks on the cul-de-sac?
That's something that I don't have an answer to.
Right, no, you put it in. You can have requirements that have to be in the homeowners. And then there's a turn, I mean, that's subject, it's an enforcement issue.
Right.
But you can put that in your order, your permit.
So who enforces it for the town?
Police?
Building inspector.
Okay, police, they have police, building inspector.
This is really a zoning issue.
Zoning board chair.
You don't want to take on that enforcement. I would think building commissioner.
Okay, okay.
You know, you're a zoning enforcement officer typically.
We could work through the finer details of that. I'm just trying to bring up all the things now.
It's really, that's an important point to, you can't end up micromanaging it, but you can definitely get into conditions that are required in the homeowners association agreement.
And what if they don't comply? How does the town take action?
No, again, you'd have to do it through enforcement, like a zoning enforcement officer enforcing the conditions of this permit because everything would fall under your comprehensive permit. But, so if there, that issue, anything else that you want in a homeowners association thing, you know, sometimes, you know, you can imagine that the universe of issues that, you know, some localities come up with that are a problem in, you know, developments that they have in their own local area and then they put those requirements into the permit. So if you have that universe of issues, if you have anything of particular local concern that you want to make sure that, you know, is required of the residents of this development.
Well, here it comes back to that snow removal again. The HOA is probably gonna do it. It's gonna snow like hell at night. Building inspector's not gonna, you know, well, see who's parked there and the fire truck might not be able to get in.
Yeah, well, then it becomes a fire safety enforcement issue as well. All you can do is condition your permit as best you can.
Okay.
The comprehensive permit will be recorded and run with the property, right?
Correct.
Whoever has title, whether that's a condominium association or something, is obligated to comply with the permit.
And there's a turnover too. You, you know, we, we have some standard conditions to put in your decision about, you know, the turnover between where it's the applicant's responsibility and then where it goes over to the homeowners association.
All right, great. Good.
Anything else, Ashley?
That's all I have.
Okay, so of the points that you've brought up, the one that I guess the applicant can answer if he chooses to, what the five-foot waiver for the five-foot decks, is that the only one that you had police, trash, recycling? These are all conditions that we can put in, but that's the only one related to a waiver?
That's the one that I don't think has been explicitly discussed in here. I mean, obviously I'm coming into this on the tail end, but I've not heard a specific discussion about that. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to put it on the record. And I did have one more comment. So just perhaps asking the applicant if he'd like an opportunity to submit a revised pro forma that will serve as their final opportunity to demonstrate the economics of the project.
Want to?
So, that's all I have.
Okay, so the applicant said, no, doesn't want to. But it's good that it's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because a lot of this comes down to making sure the project does not become uneconomic. So do you want to address a bit about the five-foot waiver?
Well, I'd like to loop the trophy for Wall Street Development. If the board has some time, I'd like to address some of the comments that have been made here tonight. And since, so we're working backwards since those are the freshest in my mind. With regard to the appeal that we filed for the order of conditions that's been issued, there was four minor items. It's basically an interpretation of what the commission considers waste material versus what is considered waste material under the solid waste disposal regulations of the Commonwealth. As I've mentioned before, there's material on the site that we consider to be metals and demolition material, wood. Those items, that debris will be removed from the site. All of the material that is existing on the site is going to be recycled, reprocessed according to the regulations and used onsite. The commission and ourselves have a difference of opinion relative to what the use of that material is going to be. Those are very simple appeal that is not gonna affect the order of conditions as it's been issued. We did propose on your plans that you have, we did propose as part of the restoration of the 25-foot no disturb zone. That area is currently, I don't know if you folks have been on the site, it's currently littered with all kinds of construction debris, asphalt, brick, concrete, other materials, some metals. That material is all gonna get cleaned out. It's gonna get restored and replanted so that that area is going to be enhanced over its current condition. With regard to the drainage on Burns Avenue, our drainage, currently there is no drainage on Burns Avenue from like the midpoint down. It all drains onto our property and through our property into the wetlands. So we've incorporated into our design a series of catch basins at the end of our right-of-way that is going to capture that water and process it through our stormwater management system. It's been reviewed by the peer reviewer beta. It's part of their storm autumn review and it's in compliance. And so anything that would increase the runoff might need, so for example, if you're going to increase the width of the pavement on Burns Avenue that's currently there, you're gonna increase runoff. Or if you add additional sidewalks than what we've proposed, that's gonna increase runoff. So under those circumstances, it may need to be reviewed. But for the most part, we are capturing the runoff from Burns Avenue, the public way and the private way. We're capturing that runoff in our stormwater management and we've accounted for it. It's all gonna be channeled through the detention basin and discharged accordingly under the plan. With regard to the center line or the location of Burns Avenue, this pavement on Burns Avenue, we would be happy to pin or stake the center line of the roadway of the right-of-way. It's a 40-foot right-of-way. We'd be happy to stake that right-of-way so that we know what the center line is. And you would measure off in either direction of the center line so that you'd know the extent of the right-of-way and the properties line of the neighbors on the roadway. So that's the way you, before any work is done on that roadway, that would be presumably how it should be done. You'd stake the center line, you'd work off of that and you'd divide the areas up for sidewalk, grass strip or curbing and so on. With regard to the fire access, you know, I've talked to our traffic engineer several times. I've instructed him to meet with the deputy chief to coordinate whatever he needs for the plans for his access. Apparently has to do with, as the chief mentioned, the way the, the way the project is designed currently to make the turn in and comply, there would be a need to run over, run past the pavement. There's no curbing here. So you'd run past the pavement onto the lawn area. So it is possible for us to make all of this comply. The radius of the entrance would be softened or widened. My concern with that is that it would encourage people to drive through as almost like a curve instead of having it as a place where people would stop, traffic would stop and make a right turn. Or same thing coming in. It would encourage like an easier transition driving in and out of the project. So it's a trade-off in terms of that situation, but we certainly can design it however the fire chief, if the fire department wants us to do that. As far as the streetlights, we can move the streetlights to the straightaways or we can, my understanding is from the traffic engineers that they just, the posts just need to be four feet off of the back of the pavement because the pole needs to be four feet off the back of the pavement because there's an overhang of the light fixture itself, six or eight feet. So it would still be on the street level.
There's only one streetlight, right?
No, we had one at the entrance and one at the end of the cul-de-sac.
So it's two.
Two. And I think the one at the entrance, we would probably need to move because of the swing of the access to the fire apparatus. We've had a number of discussions with the town engineer recently about snow removal. Currently, the town plows their snow all the way down, plows it onto our property and just leaves it there. So if we, the town continues to do that, that would eliminate our ability to store our snow. So I've suggested that if the board wants to make a condition, we would be happy to work with the town to do some sort of a mutual agreement relative to an easement and snow removal that might, we could work on that as the project unfolds. We've also had a discussion about the timing and scheduling of the improvements contemplated for Burns Avenue, meaning the repavement or resurfacing of the roadway and when it would take place. And I think the town engineer in his memo made a suggestion which we would be open to. The town may want to do more work on that roadway than just simply overlaying the roadway. So we've, we're agreeable to contributing the cost of what we would be providing to the town so that they could use that money however they felt and relieve us of our responsibility relative to the overlay of the roadway. The roadway dates back many years. The town has gone in there recently and installed a new water line. The town has gone in there recently and installed a new water line. Substantially, half of the roadway is patched with asphalt patch, which typically needs to be replaced. So, so that is also, it's in the town engineer's November 26 memorandum, I guess, that we would be open to working with the town on that situation. I want to talk a little bit about this secondary access that has been discussed off and on. We originally proposed secondary access onto the site. At the encouragement of the conservation commission, we eliminated it because their preference would be not to have a secondary access out to Union Street. If the commission, if this board requires a secondary access, that would throw us into another regulatory proposition with, under the Wetlands Protection Act with the conservation commission. So, it would be this board, if you wanted us to pursue that, subject to approval by the DEP or the conservation commission. So, other than that, are there any other questions that I missed out on?
Yeah.
Five-foot setback?
Oh, five-foot setback. Well, the way the zoning bylaws are written right now, there's a portion of it, when you have an exterior deck, a portion of it is able to encroach within the setback and some portion of it isn't. It's a zoning matter that I'll address with the building inspector, but we'd like to have it in there as a, to ensure that we don't have to come back to the board.
Would like to have it.
Yeah, what's the reason why you have to have it?
Well, people want a place to go and have a gas grill or...
This is a second story, correct?
If it's a second story, yeah, but...
Looking at the firefighters in the back about a gas grill on the second floor.
A grill on the second floor, I don't know.
So, that's a separate issue. Can't do that at home. So, but I think Ashley brings up a good point.
Well, if it's on a second story, the five-foot setback doesn't apply. If it's in the air, it doesn't, doesn't apply. But if, when the waiver, when the waiver list was, when the waiver list, if there's, if somebody wants to build a deck off the first level and it encroaches in, within the setback, we think that that would be a nice amenity for these townhouses in those locations to have.
Okay. So, it would be a nice amenity, but, but we're also looking at the neighbors who would have somebody up high looking down into their yacht from...
Well, on that side, there's only, there's only two buildings.
Well, I think one of the guys is here.
He doesn't live there.
Okay.
All right. And we did talk about the 750-foot subdivision regulation. I think that's pretty much it. Are there any other questions that the board has?
We were just both curious about the length, like, how long is it?
How long is the length?
We know it's more than 750 feet, but how exactly, how long is the length of dead-end road?
Does anybody know?
I think it's roughly about 900 feet total, give or take.
It's not, it's not 755. It's...
Existing Burns Avenue is, I think, 615 feet, including the private way portion, and then the cul-de-sac to the center, center of the cul-de-sac is, I think, roughly 300.
People in the water said that it's about 960 feet.
60?
Say that again?
Thank you.
Does that was engineered?
Do you know how many, Mr. Chair, have you looked at the plan, like, how, how much of the project would be lost if you didn't force up?
It's all how we, how we could configure.
He'd get that deck on the second floor, right?
It's all how it would be configured. I don't know, you know, I don't know what would be lost because if the cul-de-sac came back, it'd also be, you know, it just comes to a question of configuration. But we're not going to sit here and design his project for him.
No, but I, it would, you know, just to get on the record, like, from Lou is, you know, how much of your project would be lost? Why don't you want to do it? You know, get that out, that, according to him, it renders it uneconomic. It's important for you to know because you're going to have to deliberate and make a decision on, on the recommendation of the deputy fire chief. So, you know, it is good to know that.
So, if you were limited to 750 feet for the street, total access, you know, dead-end street, what would that do to your, your project?
What would you rather have, a shorter road and longer driveways or a longer road and shorter driveways? That's really what it comes down to. So, if we pull the cul-de-sac back to 750 feet, the buildings could stay where they are and we'll just make long driveways into the buildings, which is not what I would consider to be an ideal scenario. So, or the type of buildings would change from nice residential to maybe some other type of style of building. So, I think it's, because we're, we have sprinkled buildings and the, for the distance that we exceed the dead-end street requirement, if that were to be applied, it's a really kind of a minimal safety issue in our, our opinion.
Okay, so it's a minimal, minimal safety issue?
By our opinion.
Okay.
Did you get your answer about whether or not it would make the project uneconomic?
No.
I think that's the question.
We did not.
At this point, you can't determine that at this point. In all the conditions, you can't, we have...
Do you want to just identify yourself on the record? Yeah.
Dean Harrison consulted for the applicant. Given the amount of conditions that are being discussed throughout the whole process, it's too fast, it's too premature to really decide, to say whether something's economical or make it uneconomic at this point. So, I think we would rather wait to hear what conditions are going to be granted, not granted, before we make that determination.
Mr. Chairman, I think you got your answer, which is the alteration to the development would simply be to, instead of having a roadway of that length, they would have driveways extending off the end of a compliant roadway. So, I'm not sure it would impact the number of units, it would just impact the design.
Okay. But we didn't get the answer on the proforma part, but still.
Town council, any other guidance for us?
No, I mean, that, that issue is some, you know, that would benefit from further discussion.
Sure would.
It seems like you're, you know, the universe of issues is really narrowing. And, you know, I think you heard, well, I don't make a judgment call about how compelling people's testimony is, but when the deputy fire chief gets up and talks about the public safety concern about this, you know, the reason behind the requirement for the 750-foot requirement, you know, it definitely is something worthy of further discussion on the record and that, that you can give input on.
Well, I think with, Mr. Chairman, that, as I mentioned, if this board determines that a 750-foot dead-end street requirement applies under the subdivision control law, we would argue that it doesn't because it's, this is not a subdivision, number one. Number two, if this board were to condition this project on having a second means of access as a means to an approval, let's say, then that would force us to go to the conservation commission and argue that this access road qualifies as a limited project, which it would. And the commission would then be at odds with this board over whether or not to grant that, and then in which case that would get appealed to DEP. And then, of course, the redesign of the project, which we prefer not to do. So, those are the three options. So, we've gone, we've had it on the plan, we've taken it off the plan, now you want it back on the plan, or you want us to comply with a regulation that doesn't, doesn't apply.
We never said we wanted it back on the plan.
No, you're trying to apply a regulation, a subdivision rule and regulation to a project that's not a subdivision.
That, that part, I, that part I agree with Lou up to a certain point in terms of its relevance of that. And that, that's why I said at the beginning, when the deputy chief talked about that requirement, and Paul helpfully clarified, it's not that you're denying a waiver of it, the deputy chief is recommending that you apply that subdivision regulation.
For safety purposes.
Yes, but, so what the real relevance is, is you're, if you have a compelling safety issue for applying that, even though it's a state regulation or a subdivision regulation, which otherwise wouldn't apply, if you have a compelling reason to do it, and it's consistent with other permits that you, that the town has granted, in other words, you can't pick out and, and apply a requirement that you otherwise wouldn't apply to other developments. But I think the testimony was pretty clear that this is pretty much required across the board, that's what the deputy chief said. So, you're not, in other words, you're not singling out a 40B project for imposition of this particular requirement. It would be consistent with other permits that have been issued, and there's a compelling reason for it. And so, that's why I'm saying, you know, it would benefit from further dialogue on it. In other words, you're not saying either or, you're not saying, well, we want a secondary access, you're saying you may want to follow the deputy chief's recommendation that you impose that 750-foot requirement. And, and if that requires a redesign, even if, even if the redesign is not an engineered redesign, but, you know, a, you know, a sort of sketch, you know, with reasonable details to show what a redesign would look like, imposed in the 750 feet, that would really benefit from further discussion on the record.
It might actually help the board make a determination as to whether or not a technical compliance with the, the dead-end regulation is actually a worse result than, you know, what is currently proposed. So, seeing that information and what that could look like might actually help you make that determination.
Okay, well, that'll be up to the applicant if you want to continue that discussion.
And you could always limit, you know, now you're at the point where it would be appropriate for the applicant to impose some, some, you know, a conditional agreement of what you're keeping the hearing open for. In other words, he's not, it would be reasonable at this point for him to, you know, limit the, you know, limit the universe of issues that are going to be addressed in a further, one more public hearing session.
And I think we've done, I think we've, tonight, we've narrowed it down.
Really narrowed it down.
Very much. And I'm comfortable either way, I'll just say that for the record, if, you know, we can, we can go with whatever. But you're, I think you two are recommending that it stay open for further input.
Yes.
During the deliberation process.
Yes, and, well, not, no, not during the deliberation, that you would have one more hearing session so that you could have a dialogue with the developer about it, then, then you would deliberate following. If, if the developer is not going to agree to that, what I would envision doing would be from here, you know, based on the consensus and the universe of issues that you've discussed, I would come up with, you know, propose edits and revisions to the, to the draft comprehensive permit decision, get it before you, and then you would publicly deliberate on that. And one of those conditions in there might be imposition of this requirement. But doing it that way during deliberations, even though those are public, you can't get any more input on it.
It doesn't allow you to actually make any consideration as to what a revised plan could look like. So, you're going to be limited to essentially issuing a decision that imposes that limitation and then leaves it up to the applicant to figure out how to deal with it, either through an appeal or through a request for a modification after you issue your decision. I think it's probably a better course of action to actually have that information in front of you before you issue your decision. And then you don't run into the potential need for a modification.
Okay. Okay. So, I understand, do you understand what the council is saying?
I understand completely.
Okay.
So, in other words, if the applicant were to decide to continue the hearing, he could, he could describe the parameters of what the discussion would be as opposed to what we've gone through tonight.
Yeah.
He could limit it and say, I will agree only if we're going to discuss this issue, when he might want to have a dialogue with the town as opposed to taking the other route where it would be an appeal situation.
Take what you get, yeah. Exactly right, yeah.
Okay. So, we got a couple hands going up. Ashley?
Can I just add one more thing into the record real quick? So, the police department would be in support of tying the sidewalk in down to Pleasant Street and would also like to make sure that adequate lighting is provided. So, you may want to consider a condition that says the police department will review and approve a lighting plan that conforms with town code. So, just wanted to, here's my last one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Conroy?
One comment and one question. The comment is, homeowners association, and I believe this would be condo association? Correct? Okay. So, and I'm part of one, up on, you know, the old Fisher School, the town has the ability to find the condo association because they pay taxes. So, that's kind of the enforcement, you don't go, homeowners association is like wisteria too, and they own that 50-foot strip, and it's, those things just fall apart. And there's no enforcement. A condo association, you have the enforcement, the town does. The association gets whacked. So, that is one of it. Now, a comment I have, I keep hearing here, and, you know, the whole 40B process, all brand-new to me, but it seems like the less you do, then it gets closed and everything gets to be done under the so-called cover darkness, which, which I find very, very disturbing, is the more you, the less you show, well, we'll redo it later, later, later. It's done at 1:00 in the afternoon with town engineers, at 2:30 over here, whatever. So, what was presented here for this whole year may not ever look like anything, and we don't have a say in it. So, you present X and up with Y and Z over here. I'm, to me, there's been so much stuff in the air, I kind of, I don't like the way the process goes. I don't think it necessarily, tonight I heard something else, we don't want to do the overlay, we're going to do this. We have more balls in the air than, than you could possibly have. So, so, like I said, is the fact that, is the statement I'm making, John, true that this, if you close it, once it's closed, you make your conditions, but to work them out, that's done on an administrative level. No longer is it done at the public hearing level. Is that my understanding?
The hearing, do you want to?
That's, that's not correct. The board is required to deliberate in public. It's just not an open public hearing, so you're not taking any more input either from the neighborhood or from the applicant, or from your peer review engineers or anybody else. It's just a discussion among the board.
And the information we have before us that's been submitted is what we have.
Correct.
And that's what we make our, our decision based on.
But your discussion is definitely in public.
Yes. Look, no, I understand the discussion, public everything. I'll take an example of drainage. We're going to have, I'm not going to get in a disagreement right now, but the fact is if they come and say, that's going to be done upstairs in the engineering, it's not going to be done out here, correct?
Well, actually...
All working out all these issues that can't be, however he wants to do it now, if he wants to go left instead of right, that's all done in administrative function.
No, because we have a plan before us and the plan just, we just, we looked, and there are catch basins, that's just one example, you just brought it up, there are catch basins on the plan at the end of Burns, that will capture the water. So, we, the zoning... So we, the zoning board would reference the plan-
Okay.
And all the, you know, engineering that's, that's in it, and that would be, you know, part of the approval. But we would also have conditions on there, such, you know, such as, I don't know, I'm going to make it easy, you know, what types of trees to plant, we're not going to go to that detail, but, and then, you know, that's in, that's in writing, so he, then he has to comply with that, or whoever holds the permit has to comply with that.
But we're talking about, you know, you're going to redo Burns, and, you know, I can't get a catch basin, I'm going to, this is good enough, I mean, that's what I'm concerned about, is there's so many balls in the air. It, let me ask you this, John, make it simple.
It's almost like an as, as built, you know, it's never, it's never exactly what gets a-
Yeah, and he'll have to come back for modification if it's-
Yeah, any modifications, he does have to come back.
Okay, that's, that's a great point, I'm glad you made it, this modification of Burn, we're going to put a line down right before we start. We don't have anything on the plan, so how do you say it's right or it's wrong? That's where I'm going with this. There's a lot of stuff that's missing, that you can't say, you know, the sidewalk should have been here, but now it's moved over here, I understand that, you may have to do that, but right now, you have zero. That's what I'm concerned about, is where you have zero, you know, like Burns Ave is one of them, the, the, if he wants them to-
Actually, I actually think that the, the site plan, and this goes to his property, it's pretty clear what he's proposing.
Well, I understand that.
It's offsite that I, and we've discussed this, there's a lot of agreement, I'd agree with you, that the offsite stuff is, is not clear.
And, you know, and I will make my own comment, doing this for a long time, is that nobody's going to take stormwater management on something that doesn't even show up in the plan, there's no grades, there's no contours, there's nothing, so there's no study done, all they were concerned about was within the property.
Right.
So to say, you know, we took what's coming down, no, but that's where I get concerned, so what, if they can't do something, well, let me ask that, what's the next step? Do they come back here, and is it a public hearing again?
It is.
Oh, it is?
It is.
Okay.
Public hearing for-
Well, it can be both.
Minor, minor-
Right, minor, it's the same.
So first, the board has to make a determination as to whether or not the change is substantial. If it determines that it is substantial, it then schedules a public hearing.
Okay, so there is, okay.
It does have to come back.
And that comes with notice to a party.
Okay, okay. And I guess the last question I'll ask now is that, I keep hearing about if it's not profitable, I'm going to lose money. I mean, I see that, oh, I'll just ask this question through you, John, whoever can answer it is, well, if I put in that catch basin, I can't do the project, is there certain things, like drainage, that you just can't say no to?
Will you answer that? Because-
He'll, he'll be able to look at your permit, all the conditions, and either singly or in the aggregate, he can make that claim, that it renders it uneconomic. And that, that will, the hearing is closed, and he does, he determines that after you issue your decision, that will all take place in the housing appeals committee. So that's why the board, you want to work as best you can with the developer, and, you know, all the comments that are coming in, to come up with a decent, safe project, you know, that's as well-designed and conditioned as possible, so that you don't end up having the housing appeals committee be your permitting authority.
And the applicant is required to comply with all state and federal requirements, and DEP has stormwater management requirements that cannot be waived as part of a 40B application. And if they are not complying with it, that is reason for the board's decision to be upheld, even if it renders the project uneconomic. So that's what you have to, have to recognize, is, when you issue your decision, the first threshold question is, does it render the project uneconomic? But if it does, then you look at whether or not those conditions are supported by valid local concerns, such as health, safety, and the various.
Okay, then you have the answer to my question, you just can't say, I can't do this because it's going to cost me too much, it has to meet health, safety, standard, good engineering practice, or whatever you want to call it.
And that, that is one of the, the standards, is generally accepted engineering practice.
If we went to mass housing, they can't just go, I don't need to put the catch basins in, they, they can't do that, correct?
Housing appeals committee, and what, what the applicant would have to show is that you comply with DEP stormwater management policy.
Okay, so at some point, you, yeah, they just can't waive it because they just want to be, we want more 40Bs in Boston, I mean, just-
Correct, that, that is a state requirement.
Okay.
That is the generally accepted engineering principle, so even if the conservation commission didn't have jurisdiction on a project, you would still have to be able to demonstrate you comply-
With state regulations.
-with the DEP requirements. You just wouldn't have the benefit of conservation commission or DEP review of that issue, in which case the housing appeals committee would have to make the determination on its own. But, but it can't be waived.
All right, you answered my question, if something can't be done, they got to come back, major, minor, it's not necessarily done, like I said, upstairs in the engineering office on a Tuesday at 4:00.
It depends on the issue, though, so, you know, I think you've answered it sufficiently. In other words, if it's a state requirement, they have to comply with it. If it's something that the town is trying to do, you know, with, with respect to the public way, that would have to come back.
Like the streetlights, the streetlights would be a good example, the fire department could say, we want-
So if it can't be, if it can't be built in accordance of the conditions, then they're going to have to come back.
Okay, no, that's fine, as long as I, I understand, it seemed like, sitting back there, it seemed like this just goes under here, and it just all appears one day.
And even on an insubstantial change, there wouldn't be formal notice to a party, but they would have to appear before the board, they wouldn't have to necessarily appear, but the board is going to hold a public session, even if it's not an open meeting.
Just like we do on a planning board, minor, major modification, mod-
And you're going to discuss it in, in public at a duly noticed hearing-
Okay, that's-
And you'll make that determination as to whether it's a substantial or instance.
As long as we all have notice of it, and we know what's happening.
You won't necessarily get notice before they, they make their determination.
No, but it would be on the agenda.
But it will show up on their agenda.
It would show up on their agenda, and they got to determine major or minor. Okay, I understand the process, so there is, this just doesn't end here when it closes down tonight, then.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately for the board, it generally never ends.
You've got that!
Robert O'Leary, Washington Street Walpole. Couple of comments regarding waivers. As I've said before, I don't believe they can waive 6E4, because they don't meet it. And the other comment is, I believe a common driveway exists right now, with 3840 Burns Avenue and 48. So that said, a common driveway has elements of an easement within it. And it says here that common driveways shall have, sorry, no common driveway shall be connected or attached to any other driveway, no common driveway shall be extended without prior approval of the zoning board. Now, you could waive that, but you'd be going against the state regulation of overloading an easement. Apply that if you can.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, I'd just like to emphasize a couple of points after the recent discussion. This, the issue Public Works has with plowing Burns Ave is not one of snow storage, it's a very, very simple one. They're going to turn from Pleasant Street, go down Burns Ave with the plow down, and when they get to the end of the road, they will have a plow, they will have a load of snow in front of the plow, they need to back into the development to turn around, to go out safely, and they will take with them what the, I don't think the plow driver's going to be taping off the distance between the end of the public portion and private portion, they're going to plow their way out, so they're likely to take as much snow out with them as they bring in. So it's a very practical concern to turn the truck around safely, all right? Same thing with the trash truck. Just want to emphasize, it's not really a snow storage thing, it's a safety concern, and it's a rights concern for our truck to be on private property.
And the way we resolve that is that you have an easement, and I know you've talked to the applicant about this, and I think this is one that we're in agreement, are we in agreement on this one?
Mutual, yeah, well, we have to determine if we have an easement.
But if we had a condition that said that the applicant would give an easement to the town for vehicle turnaround, that would solve the, solve the issue, is that correct?
It would.
Okay.
Except that you don't think that the town is going to take the snow with it, and the plow turns around, that's what we, they don't do it now, so they're not going to do it later on.
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons I'm up here, and I'm reemphasizing this point, is that I have discussed this with Wall Street a number of times, and we're not coming to an agreement on that concept. So what I'm emphasizing to you is a very simple principle here. One of the other things that I also want to emphasize is that, when I first got up to the podium, I acknowledged that there were catch basins at the quote-unquote end of Burns Ave, they're actually on private property, or maybe one still within the public part of Burns, I mean, the private portion of Burns. I'm concerned that public water from the public portion of Burns Ave will go onto the private portion, and then onto the private site, into the private drainage system, and we don't have any rights in that system, all right? I realize it's going to get drained, it's just that we're co-mingling public into private, all right? Which would normally be taken care of somewhere, and said, okay, there's some other easement agreement that goes along with that, if that's what we're going to do, or there would be a set of catch basins at the end of the public portion, that would go on into entirely separate system, go easement, and get discharged, something in that fashion. So I just want to understand, I, I know it's going to get drained, I just want you to understand the nuances of rights, public versus private.
Okay. So for a condition, how do we resolve that concern about water, water from public Burns Ave going on to-
Private.
-private Burns Ave? How do we, do you know how we resolve that?
From a condition, that's a good question. I might let the applicant see what he thinks about it.
Well, I think basically, if there is such a condition, that it has to be mutually agreeable, if the town is going to ask now for their drainage to now increase the runoff onto our property into our stormwater management system, who's going to review it, who's going to enlarge it, if it has to be enlarged? We, we think we did a pretty good job, it was reviewed by Beta as part of our stormwater management under the, um, under the stormwater management guidelines. We think what we've done is an improvement over what's there today, without having knowledge of what, in terms of what's existing on the catch basins further up the road, if there are any, and where they go. We're willing to work with the town on a mutually agreeable easement, but we're not going to be dictated that we have to take this water, because the water's there, it's going on our property now.
Right. Two things you just said, and I understand your concern, currently going onto the property now, it's already existing, and there would not be an increase because it's the existing conditions on Burns Ave, so-
Well, well, that's what we don't know, because the town is contemplating other improvements on Burns Avenue that might increase the runoff that's currently going in that direction of our property. So if those improvements take place, and let's say the road is widened, or the sidewalks are added to both sides of the street that aren't part of our calculations in terms of our stormwater management analysis, then that would increase the runoff into these catch basins, what Kyle's referring to is whether or not the public water is now going to increase the impact on the private development. So that's what we don't know, and I don't, we won't know that unless, and until the town tells us how much of an improvement they're going to do on Burns Avenue, and what they want us, how they want us to participate in that. Right now, we've simply said, we're going to build a sidewalk, and we're going to overlay the roadway and, and make it, make it prettier than it is today, and more long-lasting, but the town is contemplating other activities that might increase those runoff calculations. So as long as you use the words mutually agreeable, we have no problems with the condition.
Kyle, is, is one of those catch basins going on someone else's private property water?
No. So the way that the plan is currently designed, it will receive the stormwater from Burns As I understand it, there's a requirement, or there's going to be a condition requiring the construction of a sidewalk on Burns Avenue by the developer, okay? If the concern is, so right now, as it's currently designed, it's receiving, as you indicated, the only increase would be the increase from the construction of a sidewalk. If that's what you want in this development, Public Works, the town, cannot be held responsible for that. We are not contemplating anything else on that road, other than possibly taking out unsuitable materials underneath, so that when it was paved, it would be paved, the paving job would hold up longer, and essentially reestablish the road the way it is. If it's going to be a problem, and that anything we do out there is going to create a situation that would allow us not to drain the water into that development, then we will take our, what we want to do off the table, and the developer can do as is required by the permit approval, and we will stay out of it.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Mrs. Campbell.
Kathy Campbell, 35, Burns Ave. I do have a couple of comments, and I'm sure nobody wants to hear this comment, but the developer giving easement rights to the town for the snow truck to turn around, and the trash truck to turn around, and I would like to remind everybody that that is half of our property, that he's giving easement rights over. So before we go down the path of, everybody's comfortable that there's a place for the trash truck to turn around, and a place for the plow truck to turn around, the turnaround that he's giving easement rights over is, is, is the Campbell property. That's one comment. This is not my wheelhouse, but you were talking about stormwater conditions. The letter from Beta dated August 28th, and the letter dated September 12th, had conditions from Beta to the ZBA regarding stormwater management. I'm not clear if those conditions have been translated onto the new document or not. There was a water, a, a letter by Napontet Valley River of August 22nd, in which they also had some conditions regarding stormwater management. Again, I'm not clear that those have been translated into the current conditions that you're, that you're drafting now. I heard tonight that there was new plans that were submitted. Are the new plans the same plans that the conservation worked off of to make their decision?
Plans that we're working off of dated September 25th.
Okay, so those are-
Conservation, that's the last thing?
Okay. Okay, fine, okay, so the new plans were architectural plans, not drawings that were being submitted?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Again, a procedural sort of question, where there's appeal in front of the conservation, depending upon this board's decision, can any work begin before that appeal is resolved?
Town Council, do you want to answer that?
I don't know how any work would proceed on anything, but no, it wouldn't, at least under the order of conditions, no.
The order, worse than me, the order is only, is within the jurisdiction of the conservation commission, which is 100 feet from the wetland, and the 200-foot riverfront, so anything outside of that is eligible for work to proceed. As I mentioned in my letter regarding our comments, you know, we've intend on removing the existing house there at 48 Burns Avenue, so we would expect that activity on that property, that part of the property, to be exempt from any of the permitting process that's going on here.
I don't know what that's subject to, I don't know, is there a demolition bylaw?
He has a demolition permit.
So, yeah, so that's, that's a separate issue, but he's right, anything, in other words, work that's approved by the order of conditions, that can't proceed while it's under, but if he has other permits allowing other work, he can't afford them.
So I would also like to formally request this board to include a copy of my letter dated November 25th regarding a condition to mass housing. So we are formally requesting a condition to be placed on the comprehensive permit referenced above, that site control be demonstrated by the applicant to mass housing authority, and mass housing finance agency authority satisfaction, based on Massachusetts Department Housing Community Development 40B, 760, CMR 5603J, evidence of site control, usually a purchase and sale agreement or deed. There was also a memo that was drafted- There was also a memo that was drafted to GXP from JCC, which I believe Ashley had put a cover letter on dated November 25th that spoke a lot about the issue that we've been discussing here for months, about the access and whether or not he's proven that he has a right to that property, owns that property. Is there any possible way that that information gets sent along with the decision to mass housing?
No, that's not part, that would not be part of the decision, it's part of our file here, but if you notice in that, there's some wording about recommended conditions, and I believe, George, do you want to say that you're the GXP on that?
Do I want to admit that I'm the, yes, I have no problem admitting that.
So, do you want to just, you gave some example of...
Exactly, yeah. So in your draft, in your draft permit that you'll deliberate on, again, I'm working up, I'll be working off of Chris's original draft, in fact, I had, we started to work on a track change and redline version of it, and Ashley very astutely thought, you know, there's no reason to throw more paper around today, so let's just wait until the close of the public hearing, and then I'll put, you know, all of the recommended conditions and requirements and revisions to the original draft order into one document for your deliberations. So, yeah, we would craft conditions and findings, you know, based on that memo.
So, that answers, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so I think there was three recommendations on your memo, and again, I'm asking if you can include the documentation, if you include the condition to...
I don't, well, would we include the documentation or just the...
No, I'm saying if you cannot include my documentation, would you consider including the condition that I'm requesting you to put in front of the, on the application, to have that?
I think what Town Council has done is raised many of the same issues you have, just as saying, but it's in his words, we'll be happy to look at, if you've submitted it as part of the public record, which I know you have, we can look at that and make sure that your intent is covered in the condition of George.
We wouldn't get into what is required by mass housing or anything like that, you know, so.
Jim, the board can't tell mass housing what it shall or shall not do as part of its final approval process, however, as part of their final approval process, they do review the board's decision. You can certainly include a recommendation in that decision that mass housing take another look at the site control issues before issuing a final approval.
And that's what one of your three conditions discusses?
Right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes?
I want to point, John O'Leary, Washington Street. If some of the changes suggested for the radius of the private driveway are introduced, it seems like they're going to alter the four parking spaces, is that an issue that needs to be addressed at all? Or supplemental parking spaces?
That's a good question. On the turning radius of the...
Yeah, it looks like the turning radius is going in the sidewalk, they're going to go through some of those parking spaces, I don't know if that's something you want to address or not, that's all. What is the final total of parking spaces provided? Guest, as we sit here right now. He did have four on Burns, if I'm correct. And that is a question, because that may change it. But he's saying that the road is going to be widened, so it may...
So they're cutting that corner, I think if you look at the site, when the parking spaces can remain?
They're okay.
He might also be talking about these parking spaces.
So there's still four on Burns, even if the fire department wants it? And are there any parking spaces in?
So I think the floor was discussing whether or not they wanted to condition the guest parking spaces, given the testimony that the town... So I don't know, it could be a good opportunity for the applicant to stay on the record, whether or not that would make any progress on that.
So, do you want to comment on the condition of eight parking spaces?
I think what I commented on at the last meeting, that we would take a look at it and see if we can add a couple more, or up to eight, four additional parking spaces, but we haven't pursued that at this point, but it'll be in your final, if you have a condition in your draft decision, that final plans will be reviewed by the fair reviewer or town engineer to ensure compliance with your decision. So at that point, you decide that you want eight parking spaces, you can try to put them in, and we'll try to put them in, but...
Well, I guess, if we condition it, it's...
You make a condition, and we'll try to comply with it.
He'll either appeal it, or he'll comply with it.
Okay, okay, because that's...
Sorry to ask about a safety issue again, sorry. I hate when I ask those safety questions.
Okay. Ashley, anything else? Okay. Ward members, anything? I think we're coming to the end here.
Sure. Just, I just wanted to clarify, as far as your discussion with access, it seems like you may want to continue the hearing for an access issue, I just want to clarify that the potential access off of Union Street, the discussion, the Conservation Commission discussed that under the other order of conditions for the 14 units or whatever, that was prior to this 40B. And the reasons why the Conservation Commission was not in favor of it and denied, because the applicant couldn't meet the regulatory requirements, there's certain thresholds, you can only alter up to a certain amount of riverfront area, you can only alter a certain amount of floodplain. The resource areas in that area right now is for temporary alteration for utilities. If there's going to be an access road put in there, that's a permanent alteration. So it skews the thresholds, that's why it's denied. So, when you're considering, you're, you know, what you're, what you're going to direct the applicant to do as far as the 750 feet, or adding an access road, I want you to take that in consideration. It was, the commission said no, because it went over the thresholds that he had already been, they already met for the work in the riverfront area, the work in the floodplain area.
Okay. So, one of the things the zoning board might not say...
It would be a limited project, because he still has access, sorry.
The zoning board might not say where to put it, just that a additional access is required, you know, is required. George, you're looking at me.
Yeah, I mean, it's sounding like, you know, the deputy chief talked about two options, either, well, there are three options. One he didn't mention is you agree with the applicant, because it's not necessary to impose this requirement, that would be one option. And then the other two options would be, you stop it at 750 feet and let him redesign it accordingly, or you require an alternate access. It's sounding, from what I'm hearing, that really that, the alternate access is not really another option, so it's either...
Unless he reduces his activity in the resource areas somewhere else.
So that sounds like that's probably not too likely, so really your options are, accept the applicant's argument that, you know, you don't need to impose that requirement, or impose the requirement, and see if the project can be redesigned to fit that.
And that would also include, but redesign so that work is not done in other parts of the resource area, which would then allow them to do work in the access road area. So, I think this is what we're running into, it's a very limited space, it's being, got a lot of activity going on in there, a lot of construction, and, you know, if something gets pushed over here, it's going to come up over here, and vice versa. So, I appreciate your comments, that it's not as easy as just putting an access out to Union Street.
Right, absolutely, and early on, I did try and clarify with Paul Berry what they were requiring, and mind you're saying that they weren't requiring a second access, they were requiring them to meet the requirements for fire safety, however, that could be applied to this particular site, so that's what needs to be done.
And I guess, so George, could the zoning board say, comply for safety reasons to 750 feet, and then you figure, have him figure it out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we approve the plan subject to these revisions.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else been at this for a while?
I just have one question. If that is, if that's a condition, is there some public way to see what the plans would look like?
Good question.
Yeah, it would be subject to the final review, the plan, their plan for final review would have to conform with your conditions.
Unless we keep the hearing open and actually see a sketch plan showing what it may look like.
So the answer's no to her, unless we keep it open.
My question is, from what I, where I think he's talking about putting this hammerhead, it is more on my property than it is right now. So if he's going to redraw plans to comply with the 750 rule, and that that plan is encroachment more on my property, I have more than issue than it right now. So when we have access to those plans, I'm going to know that that's what's going on.
So, there's a condition that the plans will be reviewed by this board in a public setting, just to, it's not an approval, it's just, you know, saying, yes, this conforms with what was approved? I've been working with Amy on being really active online and posting things so that folks can find them, so if we get to that point, we can certainly make those available online and send them to anyone who would like to see them. I don't know if that addresses the concern, but...
So, when would the, when would a set of revised plans become public, available to the public?
Well, it depends, it depends on what, in what context you're doing it. I mean, the most glaring one is, before you get the building permit, you're going to have requirements in the permit every step of the way, you know, what you need to do before you have any site disturbance, what you need to do before you apply for a building permit, what you need for a certificate of occupancy, at all those stages, there's going to be a, you know, a set of plans that need to comply with your conditions, and then, you know, that would be one place, is, before you get a building permit, is, do these plans comply before that gets issued? That would really be the big one, so...
And if they don't comply, or if they're different from what they've reviewed, you're going to have to make that determination as to whether the change is substantial or insubstantial, which is why what I was talking about with regards to a potential revision to go with long driveways and end the road at 750 feet, might just be a revision that this board is going to determine to be substantial, because it may raise issues that you have not yet reviewed, at which point you would then have to actually open a new public hearing, and you'd be noticed, and people would get that opportunity to speak at that time.
Okay. Okay. So, at this point, I think we're ready to wrap up for the evening, and possibly for good, on the public hearing part, and I'll ask the applicant if you want to close the hearing, or continue to keep it open as recommended by Town Council and the 40B Technical Assistant to allow further participation on your part. Am I correct, George, did I word that right?
Yeah, well, not really. It wouldn't just be, it wouldn't just be participation on his point. What he could do, if he were inclined to grant you a continuance, it's totally up to him at this point, whether to do that, and, so he could, he could offer to do that conditioned on the issues that you would be addressing in any further session. And, you know, as a matter of due process, you wouldn't hear from the public, you know, on issues that were, you know, just regurgitated from before, but you wouldn't be able to cut off public comment on, you know, a further discussion limited to the issues that the developer wanted it limited to. So you, I would recommend against, you know, accepting any continuance that's limited to a dialogue between you and the developer only.
It's a public, all right, it's a public hearing, so everybody's...
But, but it would be reasonable for the developer, if he were inclined to a further extension, to limit the issues for that further public hearing session.
Okay. So, I've heard from Town Council, and...
We'd like to close the hearing.
Okay. So, do we have to, the zoning, like a regular 48 vote?
Motion to close the hearing, yeah.
Okay. So, could I have a motion to close the 40B hearing for Burns Ave, case number 0519?
So moved?
Moved by Jane, second by Suzanne. Okay. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor of closing?
Just a quick question, since we have one member who is absent, he's going to be reviewing the tape, and that's okay for him to do after the hearing's closed?
You do have, you accepted the Mullen Rule.
Yes, you do have Mullen, yep.
And he only missed one.
Yep. Okay. Okay. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, the hearing is closed, the zoning board will be deliberating in public hearing?
So, what I would recommend is you schedule a couple hearings before you run up against that deadline, 40 days, one hearing to specifically review the waiver, and then another hearing that leads one other to go through the decision and the conditions, so, you know, just so you don't run up against another.
Okay, you have, yeah.
Fuckin' that chart, where did I put that stuff?
That's not the one I have next to them.
Oh, these are, it's just mine.
Those are just meetings.
What's M mean? Maybe?
Must.
Oh, must.
I must.
Is that a maybe?
M is maybe.
That was maybe.
Wow, the sixth is the only one everyone can go.
If everybody else can make it, I can make it happen, but...
You can't go the 16th here?
Of course, everybody else can.
That's the only one that everyone else can do? I'm going away next week.
I'll be able to do it. It's my birthday, also.
The 16th, I'm next week, that's why I'm going away.
No, it's fine.
He said he can do 16.
So, are you out for these?
Yep.
So next week, you're out.
Yep.
There's a meeting date for...
I like counting dates.
We have to take a drink.
So, what date is today? The next, Ashley, the next hearing that we'll be looking at is December 16th. What kind of day is that? Monday? And, George, are you, will you be available for that?
What date is it? I was busy counting dates.
Monday, the 16th?
What's, not, what?
December 16th is a Monday?
Oh, yes.
And then it looks like this one's good.
16th, you said, that's good for other people? All right.
I have to cancel my last one, after it be in New Bedford is the real problem.
So, yes, Ashley?
So, December 16th to discuss the waivers, do you want to set a time for that?
Seven o'clock. Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Can somebody keep me up to date? What did we talk about, so the deliberate?
The waivers are going to be the 16th. And then...
And possible discussion of the draft decision.
And then, and then the 6th, maybe?
The 6th of January?
Right, that looks good.
Okay, well, pencil in that date for now, and then when we get... Well, pencil in that date for now, and then when we get to the 16th, we can continue.
Okay.
So, I'll save both of those days.
So, what's the pencil date?
6.
Do you know what kind of day January 6th is?
It's a Monday.
That's also a Monday.
Monday again? What happened to our Wednesdays?
You're away.
I went away. I go away once a year.
Okay. So, that wraps up that...
You should move, you should, though, make a motion and, you know, continue to that date certain about, for the deliberations.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
You're not continuing, you're right.
There's only two now.
Could I have a motion to continue?
To schedule.
To schedule deliberations on December 16th, Monday, December 16th, here at Town Hall at seven o'clock?
Can it be six? No.
Seven o'clock, shouldn't be six.
No, no, just like six o'clock.
Oh, six?
I don't know, I mean...
She wanted to start at six.
I thought she was calling at six.
No, I'm just asking if anyone's upset.
You told me it would be six.
It might be hard to...
Six would be better for me.
You probably can't get out of the city like this.
It's tougher for me to get here, but I can, I can make it.
Sure.
If everybody else...
When I said the 16th, I didn't realize it was going to be a regular month.
Okay.
So, six o'clock would be better for me.
Okay. Drew, can you make six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday, December 16th at 6:00 PM here, main meeting room.
Second.
That's when we, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Okay. So, we will continue, we will have deliberations at that point. George, will you be here for that?
Correct, yep.
And Paul?
I will be here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
You know what? It's coming over here, and I looked at it since...
I got John over here too. Was that all nice?
And she's got a really good, yeah, she's got a really nice house.
I haven't known George.
This is all we have. Well, this is the one we're doing now.
Okay, I'll find out. I'll find out. Amy, can you find out if this room's available? A good friend, Jack, said make sure it's available on the 16th on Monday.
I will check.
Look closely at Jane.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we still have another public hearing. I want to take a couple minutes, I just need to get a drink of water, other people maybe need to clear the room.
And she goes, what are you doing? She goes, what are you doing to my property? And I said, that's mine. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, can I thank you?
Good night.
And I said, that's mine. It was just like this, we had the exact same. George, you want me for the ride?
Yeah. Totally, thank you.
I should have given one to Paul, but he ran away.
Oh, yeah. This is for the ride.
Oh, no, no, I'll take one.
No, 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 that's okay. No, no, no.
No, but she gave me two.
Thank you very much.
You.
Did you use melted butter for those?
What?
Did you use melted butter?
Um, no, softened, really softened, yeah. You know what the secret is?
Good, huh?
Here, do you want it? Here, do you want?
Get another one!
Okay, we still have, next public hearing is Drew.
You know what the secret is? We're going to parchment paper.
Okay, I'll see you, George.
Bye, thank you.
Bye, thank you.
That's the end of the night, is it?
Let's do this. Still working on this one. John can only take one home because he's got too many kids. One lady.
So, this is a continuation of 990 Boston Providence Highway. This is the hotel being proposed on the town line. So, Mr. Mackey, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, 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 all business and questions. So, Councilor on the FFA. When we left last, I guess it was last month, you gave us some homework. I think we have answers to all of the questions, and hopefully they'll find them satisfactory. Given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to jump right into it, if that's okay. First, I only have one copy of those, I don't know if you're able to print that out from Paul Berry, Deputy Chief.
I did.
Which, by the way, came in, I was in the office at 10:00 this morning looking for information, and it came in...
It came in about 6:00. At my office. And then Mike Yanovic also sent a letter about 4:00 this afternoon. And then, I have one for everybody, I'm not entirely sure what the intent was, that you would ask for copies of all of the agreements. So, each of these is a set, if you want to take them, but they're for the record. I figured more is better rather than leaving some to you. So, basically, where I believe we left off last, last month, we had a couple of questions, and I'd like to just address those. The first one was a fairly simple but important question. We are asking for a height variance up to 65 feet. And have a parapet around the front that potentially could go up to 72 feet, it may actually be less than that, but that's going to be hashed out during the building permit process. Won't be higher, that I can tell you.
So, 65?
65 is the actual building height.
Is that including that thing?
Nope.
That thing that...
That thing goes up to 72.
72?
Yes. And so, I met with the Deputy Chief and the Chief, and specifically said, here's the plan, roof is 65, the thing, for lack of a better term, that's...
What is the thing called, though?
Parapet.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Goes to 72. They looked at the plan, they, 65 is fine, 72 is fine.
And we have a ladder truck to do that?
We have a 100-foot ladder truck, I found it.
Do we really?
Yes.
It's new, that's okay.
It's brand new.
From tow, maybe?
No, it's new, it's new.
I don't think so. I actually think Siemens was part of that.
Is that what it was?
But yes, they, they can accommodate it. They also have a 100-foot ladder. They have informed me that Sharon has similar capacities, so they didn't see a problem with it, not from those proposed ladder, but we do have written confirmation. They have reviewed the plans very specifically about height, and at least from their perspective, they don't have an issue with it. One of the other questions, I think the Chair mainly asked this, but was, again, a concern because we're, we aren't in any unique situation. A lot of the questions were, why is Walpole taking the lead? Who's going to have zoning enforcement? Who's going to have oversight of the project? Mike Yanovic has provided a letter in summary, it's, he wanted the control, he felt that having one department have overall supervision of it was beneficial, he felt that he was the man to do it. As far as enforcements of the decisions, basically Walpole will enforce Walpole's decision, and Sharon will enforce Sharon's decision, and there are multiples as they go through. As far as the building permit goes, he is the issuing authority, and he is going to conduct the inspections, and in, I believe, his opinion, he is going to be the one that would issue any building violation codes, et cetera, as far as that goes. So, he was, is comfortable with the process. I'll let his letter speak for itself, if you want to read the whole thing, I'd certainly encourage that. But in summary, we met with him, and he said, yep, I, I wanted this, and that's kind of how we got to the position that we are currently in.
But did he want it by default, or did he want it because...
No. He actually asked for it. This was not a, this was not a him and Joe Kent had a disagreement. He felt that it's a Walpole project, he wanted to have control. So, beyond that, I can't really tell you. I will say, based on his time in Brookline, I guess maybe that's why he felt very comfortable in it. He is overseeing similar projects in Brookline, Boston, Brookline, I forget which the other town is, but he's done this before and is comfortable. He's not here to speak for that, but the tone of his letter, I would say, indicates that that is, is correct. It wasn't a question, but it did come up. Bob made a good point, that we want to make sure that this, this is not in any way, shape, or form a contract zoning issue. I don't have anything from town council on that, we have reached out to them, but they did not provide it. We did, however, do some of our own research. Basically, contract zoning would be, the town would be taking money effectively to change its zoning, which, this is definitely not that, because nothing in the bylaw is changing. The Bellingham case, which was Duran versus Bellingham, it's about 10 years old or thereabouts, does say that a municipality may accept a payment for public purpose that is conditioned on a favorable vote, as long as the vote itself is not a condition. So, basically, it's okay for Walpole to have entered into agreement to receive money, which it's doing in a variety of different ways, through sewer and water, through et cetera, et cetera. But it only gets paid if the project goes forward. There's nothing in there, and I would point out, you'll have to forgive me, some of the stuff is on my phone, which is not what I meant to do, but in the, the intermunicipal agreements, basically in section 4A and 5B, it very specifically says, nothing in this agreement binds the zoning board or anybody else for a favorable vote. So, it's understood that the payments aren't getting made because the sewer wouldn't have to go in, so on and so forth, if the project gets denied. That is totally within each board's discretion as it is. If it does, however, get approved, which you approve on its merits, not on the fact that there's this agreement, then the applicant owes the town money. And so that, I just wanted to be very clear, I started off saying that, and Bob brought it up, and I wanted to make sure that nothing I've said even implies that you're required to vote one way or another. It's simply that there are constraints out there to this building as it currently stands. If you voted no, we would have to go back to the town and renegotiate the agreement or do what you have. But that in and of itself does not by any means warrant a variance. So, to Bob's point, the agreement aside, and we did bring this up, but I just wanted to reemphasize this, the lot is unique, it's split. I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe there is another roughly 50-50 Walpole-Sharon lot. There is the Dunkin' Donuts in, it's up by Norwood, across from the mall, basically. Part of that parking lot is in Norwood. Some of their frontage is in Norwood. Building, to the best of my recollection, is totally in Walpole. Just because of the way the wetlands are positioned, where 95 is, and the general shape of the lot, this building has to be built effectively perpendicular to Route 1. It's not exactly, but rather than going parallel or being a big square. So, unlike the Dunkin' Donuts, which is a split lot, where you could put a whole square inside of one town, you just can't fit it without, I, without making it uneconomic. Because the Chair asked for this, and we did check, somewhere in the 110-room count is the threshold for any national chain to put in a hotel. We're at 118? 16, pardon me. And the top floor itself has, we counted this earlier, 28-room?
I, you know, you used a term that we're very familiar with here from our previous hearing this evening, uneconomic. Different situation here.
Absolutely. Doesn't...
So, I, I guess, what does that have to do with what we're looking at here?
One of the, the first variance criteria is that it, a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw will create, would create a hardship, a significant hardship, economic or otherwise.
Okay, so, you're, you're saying that it's the scale of the building?
Yes.
That makes it an economic hardship?
Correct.
Okay.
Basically, we can't build an 80-room hotel. Well, we can, but not economically.
Okay. How many at Fairfield?
108.
That's 108 then?
Yes. And we counted, because if it was a simple matter of, without making the hotel truly an architectural, interesting piece, taking off the entire top floor wouldn't work, we'd have to build higher in Sharon and lower in Walpole. I'm not saying that can't be done, but I think both from a town aesthetic and a overall functional building, it's just not as good as having five floors. So, again, there, there's hardship there, and unlike your previous hearing, we're not saying that makes or breaks this, and we're not going to report, but I have to show a hardship. And the main one is, you can't build an economic hotel without the fifth floor and those 20 rooms, or slightly more than 20 rooms. We can certainly, we, it's certainly possible to build an 80-room hotel, they exist, but again, back to economics of the situation, and as I said before, not precedent to your board, but something to consider, this isn't the simple hook-up to Walpole Sewer for whatever the normal connection fee is, and move on. We understand that, and we're fine with it, but at the end of the day, the spreadsheet comes out, and it has to be in the black for the project to go forward. So, that's, that's all I'm saying. It's not, this is not a 40B argument where it has to be economic or you can't impose it, this is just justification, should your board decide that you are interested in granting the variance, consider that, and I think legally you would be within your rights to do so.
What I often struggle with in these variance requests is that you can always construct an argument that says that this is what I want to do on my, on my property. I can do a bunch of different things on my property under the zoning bylaw, but the one thing I want to do is, in this case, build a hotel.
Yes.
And because I've sort of narrowed my range of uses that I would otherwise be allowed to this one specific thing, now I have an argument that I can layer on top of that that says, well, if I'm going to do a hotel, it's a hardship for me to build something that's less than, let's say, 100 rooms. And I'm just, what I struggle with is that, that strikes me as a very sort of liberal interpretation of what a variance is. In other words, if you, if it sort of stems from avoiding a taking, you know, by saying you can't use your property for anything, but if you can show that there's hardship, that a strict application, I mean, we could strictly apply it to say, okay, you can't build a hotel, but you can build something else there that's economically viable. I just, that's just something that I struggle with on these, and I don't know if you want to comment on that or not.
I'm more than happy to. I don't necessarily know that will assuage your fears, but for this particular priest, again, it's a fact-specific, and I don't disagree. You're not by any means saying, well, if you, we don't give you the variance, you can't do anything else there, you could go put a, I don't know, Verizon store in, theoretically. What I can say, and Dave may have a little bit more information on this, in the 13-ish years that this project has been going on, as I stated, I think, the last hearing, it's kind of evolved back and forward. When my dad was doing this, years ago, with Kathy Kelly and Dave, it was going to be a hotel, the ground round was still there, it was going to look very different, but that's kind of what was going to be done. Ms. Kelly and Bickery Corporation did not go forward, very obviously, sold the property. In the ensuing time, so roughly 10 years, I personally have known of three, I've heard of five different proposals for this lot. And they range from everything from, I think, three to four commercial buildings along Route 1, to something similar we're doing, to a variety of things, not a hotel. None of them succeeded, for economic reasons. Again, I can speak to three, I can't speak to all of them, Dave may have a little bit more. So we're now back to a hotel. My personal involvement as far as representation, I've been on both ends and they were both hotels. But I had been asked, a variety of people, what do you think of this? To include some folks in Town Hall saying, hey, have you heard anything about this? Simply because they thought I was still representing them. So in this, again, very specific case, I'm not saying that nothing can be built, but I will tell you, people have tried for 10 years and failed for economic reasons. So if I had shown up 13 years ago and said, hey, I need this variance and hadn't looked at anything else, I would absolutely, I wouldn't, I would still be advocating for my client, but I would totally understand where you're coming from. In this particular case, we're here at the tail end of 13 years of trying other things and it didn't work. I'm not telling you that a year from now, who knows? Use that no one's ever even heard about comes down Route 1 and says, yep, this is the absolute perfect place. Because that's happened to me before, so I'm not going to say that they can't. But through a considerable amount of due diligence for literally, oh, this particular team's been at this, let's see, I deployed, came back, deployed again, so four or five years. This is the best we've been able to come up with. Yes, it is somewhat self-limiting, but when we first started, it was, hey, I want to buy this land. Got it. And we looked at, can we put a bank in the front and a small hotel in Sharon? Can we do a CVS? Can we do, those are two things that immediately come to mind. Both were examined, both were shot down, not by us, but by people we were trying to build for. So I'm in front of you saying...
Not by us either.
No, no, it never came to here. Basically, it was a purely economic decision. I can say it was, CVS was one of them. Nope, not. I don't know what their calculus was traffic-wise, traffic counts, turning radius, I have no idea, but they looked at it, walked away. We had a bank look at it, walked away. So we bent, went back to Applebee's connected to a hotel. I'm not, still giving you a great answer, but I will tell you, fact-specific for this site, we have done a considerable amount of due diligence and this is where we're at.
Excellent.
I actually think those are the main questions that we were sent home to research. So we're happy to answer any other questions.
Do you have, any board members have any questions? I've got concerns about the, the height variance. The, that's a concern in site plan. You know, it's interesting, you know, the concern about a CVS and other things, as I looked at the traffic flow in and out of that intersection, I still had concerns about how it, how it was going to move. So those would be my, my concerns as far as traffic, traffic safety and the height of the building. And particularly where, you know, we look at Fairfield where they've built a hotel and I think there's another one down, down the road. And those were held at 45 and I just don't see... I don't see any, any variance, you know, necessary. It's nice, but maybe there's other ways to figure out how to make it up. So those are my thoughts. Anybody else have questions?
I added to the diagram, it's 72, it's 72 feet. I mean, we don't have anything on Route 1 that's up 72 feet.
I can look into, into that for you. I'm not entirely sure that's correct, but it may be. And I'm not arguing.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know.
Well, has the zoning board given a variance for anything?
Not that, not at the time I've been there, no.
As far as height? Both of the apartment buildings in Walpole Center?
No, I'm talking about on Route 1.
On Route 1, that I don't know. And the only one that was, only ones that were higher didn't require variance because they were limited manufacturing and the, when you do the setback calculation, you can go a lot higher. So Siemens buildings, I think, are considerably higher than 60 feet.
Well, I'm just...
The 72 feet is to hide the mechanicals on the rooftop?
And that potentially can come down. We're not planning on building it any higher than it has to be, but that's, when you look at their stock plan, is what it is. And if that was, that's the sticking point, then we can come back with a number. I assume eight to 10 feet lower, maybe 10 feet, eight feet, somewhere in there. I'd have to check.
The front of the building has a sign on it.
I get that, but there's nothing behind it. It's, it's potentially hiding mechanicals of the rooftop.
And the access to the elevator shed. To, to your point, it is a screen as well as a sign. But we certainly can look at that and come back if that was going to make a difference. Happy to, I guess, discuss the traffic more, because that is one of the requests, is to alter the parking. We can...
We have a full-blown traffic study. Went to Mass DOT, done what they've asked us to do. We're going to make the traffic flow better than it is now. Moving curb cuts away from the intersection and restricting turns out onto 27. Restricting turns, yeah, out, no left turns out where that light is. And Mass DOT, McMahon has done the work for us. There's a full-blown traffic study and it's, we can't go to Mass DOT, too. We have site plan approved, we're not going to give them yet, but they've seen the study and are done what they've asked us to do. So we're actually making the traffic issue better than it is now from a traffic flow standpoint. By moving that curb cut on Route 1 away from the intersection, you're giving cars time to get in and get out. And by restricting turns out on the 27, you're too close to the light for certain turns. And Mass DOT has asked us to do that and McMahon's study and these plans respond to that. So we've done everything we can that the professionals have asked us to do to make it better.
If, if you'd like, because I'm totally understanding, I'm not asking for a vote tonight, we can have someone from McMahon come and give you a more detailed presentation if you'd like. It hadn't come up last hearing or we'd have them here tonight. Happy to do that.
It's your hearing, you can decide whether you want to keep it open or closed.
I, I think at this point, considering there's a lot of questions on the board, we're keeping it open if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I look at, I'm just looking at, because when I took a look at this separately, I didn't think the access out to Route 27 changed that, that much.
We're making the right turn only.
Right turn only.
Right turn only. Okay, that's, that actually probably concerns me even more because now people coming out...
We have to retrain Walpole to go, to go right on. You have what happens at the Olm Dipo in Batucci's where everyone forces right, but they hook a left right as soon as they come out of there. Not saying I can't compare the two, but it's pretty much the same scenario.
No, and this all goes into the design. So I'm, you know, I'm looking at existing and proposed and at least there, I don't see much of a difference. I do see it's been moved further, further south on Route 1 for the in and out. But also, volume's going to improve. So still have concerns. It's up to you, it's your hearing. If you want to continue and provide more information, that's up to you.
We would like to do that.
What's available in January?
We have one hearing in January.
On the 15th. Do you want to go to January 15th?
That would be fine, thank you.
Okay. Let's continue till January 15th.
You had instructions, you know what you're going to ask to go say?
We'll probably actually have someone from McMahon just come and talk traffic rather than several lay folks. And we'll think of what other information we can provide on the height. We will look, really, does it need to be 72 or can be in the 60s or how big does the parapet really need to be?
Fifth floor trust was at 65.
65. That's the height of the building.
So could I have a motion to continue until January 15th at the request of the applicant?
So moved.
To move by Suzanne. Second by Jane. Any further discussion on continuing? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, so carried.
Probably should ask this before, is Rick coming back?
Yes.
He's asleep tonight.
All right. Could we ask him to review the tape?
Yes. So we have some minutes to approve and, well, no, I've, I reviewed them and there's a number of them that we need to look at approving. Going back to September, and I think there's some copies here of that.
I think everyone should have a copy in their folder.
In their folders. So, so I was good with the September ones. And then the only change I had on the November 6th was, and this was just for clarity...
November 6th?
Yeah, November 6th. Here it is. It was just where it has a paragraph separated out, if you would, just because it clarifies.
Okay. Can I keep this?
Yes. Actually, that has all of them stapled together. Let me see the next one.
It is? Oh geez, yeah, you put on print today. I, I know what it is though.
I can give it back to you. So that, and then the next one I had here was October 16th. That all looked good. And then the last one was the short one. And again, I'm going to be like, Bob, just one comma should be a period because it sounded like, and that's a compliment, Bob.
That's your dad's name, we can't call you that.
No, I'm talking about this, Bob. But it, it just has to do with clarifying that the comprehensive permit regulations was given to the board, period. Clark and Messier explained. Okay, so very minor, but I feel like if I got to read it, I got to do both, Joe.
I have some influence on this board.
You are, you are. And that's a good thing. I think it's important to be accurate with what we do. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th, September 18th, October 16th, November 6th, and November 20th?
Now second.
Moved by Jane, second by Suzanne. Any further discussion?
No. Just wondering why I put my code on.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, so carried. Okay. We also have a letter and this is about the proposed 40, there's a potential 40B development on Summer Street and the applicant has discussed expanding beyond 300 units to 420 units. And the Board of Selectmen have weighed in and it says, this is from James, James Johnson, Town Administrator to Omni Properties, but it was important that the zoning board be aware of this, that the Board of Selectmen has not recommended that they expand beyond the 300 units at this time. So this, this... Well, they do.
Yeah.
And it has to do with correspondence back and forth to safe harbor, but the Town Administrator wanted to make sure that the zoning board had that and that we received it at this meeting, so we do have a copy of that. Are you, are you ready into some of this?
Oh, I, I haven't.
Okay.
So as I understand it, though, they, it's the Board of Selectmen that informs mass housing that we are invoking the safe harbor and that we don't have, we as a board don't have to do anything at this point.
So it would be a request from the applicant to inform if you wanted a large project waiver. The Housing Partnership is meeting next week to discuss some, some pretty big changes that will happen. Not big changes, but some changes in policy that we want them to kind of give the thumbs up on. And then I think if this board can spend some time kind of looking through it and giving any feedback, now is the time ahead of this springtime meeting. It's crazy to be talking in December about...
No, no, it takes, so would you, would you send us that information when you get it?
Yes, so as soon as they, they do live on some of these policy questions, I'll send this board this rapid and that will be next week.
Okay.
Because this is the board, we ultimately need a ministry as well. So it's important everyone's all... That's all.
Thank you.
Good. So our next, besides the 40B deliberations that we just early discussed, our next scheduled meeting is January 15th and that looks like a relatively late meeting. January 15th? Three hearings. That's late basically. Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved.
Moved by Suzanne, second by Jane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, so carried. Okay, good evening. That's it for the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, everybody.